Good morning, everyone. As people are shuffling in here, we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to the September 27th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on October 5th, 2021, at 10:30 a.m. Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. So, the speaker request form looks like this. It asks that if you are not the applicant or the agent on an item and you wish to speak on that item on the agenda, fill this out. Most importantly, write your name and the agenda item number. The agendas are in the back bookcase at the rear of the room. It helps keep me organized here during the meeting. With that, we'll go ahead and get the meeting started with the roll call. Note that every broadcast is gone, yeah? Everyone else is here. First item on the agenda is approval of the September 13th, 2021 minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Noting none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of the September 13th, 2021 minutes. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Second item on today's agenda is approval of the agenda. On today's agenda, we have consent items three and four, followed by regular commission items five through 19. Items 20 through 24 are our normal end of meeting items. Are there any changes to today's agenda? Noting none. Is there a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Motion for approval, correct? Correct. Second. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. This brings us to today's consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 1823 for BCS Invest LLC Kevin Haberstroh to review six storage units and a caretaker's manager's residence on the subject property in a general commercial district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1823 with conditions. And item number four is conditional use permit review CU 2015 for Greg Helgeson to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a single family residence in an agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit CU 2015 to the October 25th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Are any of these items that staff wishes to poll?
No.
Are there any items the membership wishes to poll?
Number four.
Number four? Okay. For those people in the audience, the consent agenda is items three and four in today's agenda. Item four will be polled from the consent agenda. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on item three? Noting none, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda, which today only consists of item three.
So, move.
Move approval of item three with conditions.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second for approval of today's consent agenda. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item four.
Good morning, Commissioners. Madison Ransom.
Mr. Chair, point over here. I've only have one small question. It's just that I have to direct it to her.
Sure.
We don't need to read the whole thing and go through it. I understand it. And with the, we're going to have a lengthy meeting as it is. Did we, or have we? I looked at the picture that was submitted of the trailer unit. Do we have any questions of why it's configured the way it is with these large tanks? Roof, we've got roof mountings and also, I mean, I question what's going on here. Doesn't look like a place I live in.
Right. That's why we are asking to continue it. I reached out to the applicant owner to do a site visit, went out and did the site visit, and then tried to discuss these things with him, and I couldn't get a hold of him.
Okay. Okay. So, you had some questions too when you saw the unit?
Correct.
Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I'll move to approve.
So, hold tight. The recommendation from the Planning Commission is to continue this conditional use permit to the October 25th meeting. Is that your motion?
Yes, I'd move to do that. Staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
All right. Motion and second to continue conditional use permit 20-15 to the October 25th, 2021 Planning Commission. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item five.
Good morning again, Madison Ransom, environmental planner. Agenda item number five is conditional use permit CU 21-55 to live in existing living quarters of a pole barn while building a primary residence on the subject property. The owner and applicant is David and Helene Weldon. The location is at 13550 Highway 40. The current zoning is agriculture district. The existing land use is residential. Access is off Highway 40, and there's no special flood hazard in the area. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They are on the screen, and I will read the findings. Number one, allowing this, yes, by allowing this conditional use permit should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, yes, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Number three, yes, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Number four, yes, access is off the existing approach from Highway 40. The applicant plans to use the existing onsite wastewater treatment system for the proposed single-family residence, and water will be provided via an existing private well. Number five, yes, the recused use is a residential use. The closest residence is approximately one mile away from the subject residence. Therefore, it should not affect traffic congestion in the area. Number six, yes, the current zoning is an agriculture district. The requested use is to live in the existing living quarters of the pole barn while building single-family residence and to allow the existing pole barn to maintain as a guest house. A conditional use permit is required under Pennington County Zoning Ordinance Section 204G, One Principal Structure Permit. A guest house is permitted in a zoning district with an approved conditional use permit. Number seven, yes, the future land use of the subject property is agriculture district. Allowing this conditioning permit is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. Property history, there is an existing 42-by-60 pole barn with 15-by-42 living space. The property is current on the onsite wastewater treatment system. The request was routed for interdepartmental review, and no major concerns or objections were received. On September 17th, staff performed a site visit and met the applicants to view the existing living quarters in the pole barn and to discuss the timeline to build a single-family residence. The applicants plan to apply for the building permit within 90 days of the approval of the conditional use permit. Staff has not received any complaints regarding this conditional use permit. Therefore, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 21-55 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on item five?
Just two short ones.
Go ahead, Troy.
One, are they planning a new septic for the residence at this point in time?
Right now, the plan is to use the existing septic system and only adding two bedrooms to the house.
Okay, so you don't have anything on the new residence yet?
Not yet. They haven't applied for a building permit yet.
And I couldn't understand from the numbers that you listed, does the current one have an operating permit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Noting none. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none and seeing none, staff's recommendation is for approval of conditional use permit 21-55 with eight conditions. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item six.
Good morning. Cody Sack, environmental planner. Agenda item six is layout plan LPL 21-60. It is to combine three lots to create lot 4R blockade of Forest Homes Development Subdivision. The applicant and landowner is Dennis Nwione Kamik. Chris Lancer, bringing in the agent Janelle's in the audience if there are any questions. Location of the property is 22941 Forest Road. The three properties combined add up to 2.25 acres. Current zoning is rural residential district and existing land use is residential. Access is off of Forest Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Currently as the property sits, Lot 4, which is the big lot to the south here, contains a single-family residence, detached garage, and a residential addition on which are building permits. And there is a, they are current on their onsite wastewater treatment system and their operating permit. Lot 5 is vacant of any structures. And Lot 6, which is the lot to the northeast, does have a building permit for a detached garage and a conditional use permit for that garage. And Lot 4R will be, will contain all those structures and will contain the septic system. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. The only major concern was from the highway department. The applicant has two approaches. If this lot is created, so, and variance ordinance 14 standards for having two approaches will be, need to be obtained. A rezone will be required for the purposes of a layout plan. Staff finds no significant issues with applicant's request. This appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. So, staff is recommending approval of layout plan LPL 21-60 with conditions. But staff would like to add a condition that prior to filing the plan that registered deeds of variance ordinance 14 standards for the second approach be obtained. So, there'd be 10 conditions.
Did you say, say that again?
That prior to filing the plan that registered deeds of variance ordinance 14 standards for the second approach be obtained.
Number nine discusses that a little bit?
So, I think the one that's in your guys' packet actually has that condition and has the 11 conditions that are required, so one would need to be added.
Okay.
I just have a previous copy.
So, we don't need?
We don't need to add any conditions. It would just be the recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So, it indicates it's not zoned appropriately. How are you addressing that?
They either, they have to get a rezone. I did see that they do have a lot size variance applied for to keep the lot rural residential that goes on the next board meeting, Board of Adjustment meeting.
I'm sorry. You're saying, because to rezone, I mean, everything surrounding it is zoned in the same fashion according to this map.
So, they're applying for a lot size variance to stay?
To the current zoning.
Correct, to stay the current zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL 21-60 with the 11 conditions listed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a motion? There's a motion. Need a second? Motion and second for approval of further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item seven.
Item seven is layout plan LPL 21-61. The applicant and landowner is Justin Devaney, PD2 Construction Incorporated. The agent is Renner Associates LLC. The location of the property is approximately 0.11 miles east of the intersection of South Highway 16 and Mill Iron Drive. The two lots combined will add up to 1.02 acres. Current zoning is highway service district. The property is vacant of any structure. Access will be off Mill Iron Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Currently as the property sits, both properties are vacant. There are no structures located on the property, no building permits for any proposed structures. For the proposed lots, Lot 4R will be vacant and will be 1.02 acres in zoned highway service district. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. For the purposes of the layout plan, staff finds no significant issues with applicant's request. This appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. So, staff is recommending approval of layout, layout plan LPL 21-61 with conditions.
Thank you. Questions on agenda item seven?
I will move to approve.
I will second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? To be sure, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, motion and second for approval of LPL 21-61. Further discussion noted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item eight.
Item eight is rezone 21-27. It is to rezone 14.82 acres from agriculture district to ranch at, to range at district. The applicant and landowners Brett and Sandra Estes. The agent is Ferber Engineering Zach Lampert. The location of the property is at 7820 Norseman Lane. It involves 14.82 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district. The existing land use is residential. Access will be off Norseman Lane, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. When approving condition, or when approving rezones, we look at current land use or current zoning within one-half mile. And current, or current zoning is suburban residential district, which is that brownish-orange rural residential district, which is the yellow. Open space, which is the dark green. And agriculture district, which is the light green. Future land use within one-half mile is open space, which is the dark green. Range at residential district, which is the tan rural residential district, that's the yellow, and suburban residential district, which is the brownish color down here. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. Current zoning and future land use in the area identifies the subject property and several other parcels as rural residential district within one-half, with, or, sorry, I should say ranch at district within one-half mile of the subject property. Therefore, the applicant's request to rezone appears to be in harmony with current zoning in the area. So, staff is recommending approval of rezone, RZ, of RZ 21-27.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, staff recommends approval of rezone RZ 21-27. Is there a motion?
So, moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item nine.
Good morning, Commissioner Chuti Mangsakbun, Planning Department. Item, agenda item number nine is layout plan LPL 21-62 to combine two lots to create lot 8A of block three of Petola Estates subdivision. The applicants and landowners are Jack and Marie Zimer. The agent is Brad Limbaugh. The location is at 12525 Jack's Court. The current zoning district is agriculture, agriculture district, and the existing land use is residential. Lot A is 1.2 acres, and it contains single-family residence and a shed and a detached garage. The property has a current operating permit. Proposed lot 8A will be two, two and a half acres, and it will consist of single-family residence, a shed, and detached garage. The applicant requests appear to be in harmony of the existing lots and current land uses in the area. There is an existing easement on Lot 10, which was not included in the proposed layout plan. It is included as some conditions of approval. Also, the layout plan indicates a six-foot-wide easement, minor drainage easement. However, the subdivision regulation requires an eight-foot-wide utility and minor drainage easements. Rezone and comprehensive plans amendment are also required. Staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL 21-62 with 11 conditions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on item nine?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Troy.
Do we have a property line encroachment issue? I see from the picture that we were furnished for the, and I know they vary, but three feet sometimes is a lot now. And I see that there's a whole part of the house is hanging over the one picture. Whether we have some type of lot line encroachment or property encroachment is what I'm asking.
No, no. I went to the property.
The drawings indicate it's farther in.
Right. Yep, no. The property is, it's large, and when I did the site visit, the property owners also put the stake, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, of that property.
You know the picture I'm talking about, Chuti?
Yes, this one. Yep.
I thank you.
It's the, the rapid map is not survey quality, so in the hill, it's kind of shift.
Changing it and blowing it up sometimes maybe.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none and seeing none, staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL 21-62 with 11 conditions. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Okay. Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 10.
Item 10 is conditional use permit 21-54 to allow the property to host the Rushmore Music Festival, three-week summer camp program in July. The applicants and landowners are Brett Wolfish and Katie Smirnova, and they are in the audience if you have any questions for them. The property is located off of Klondike Road. The property is currently vacant of any structure. The applicants have applied for a building permit for a single-family residence. During staff's review of the applicant, applicant's conditional use permit request, and after the, after meeting with the applicants, the appropriate option for the applicant's request is a planned unit development overlay request. The applicant has submitted an email to, the applicant has submitted an email to withdraw this conditional use permit request. Staff received a phone call and emails from the applicant's neighbor opposing this conditional use permit request. Staff recommends approval of withdrawal of conditional use permit CU 21-54 per the applicant's request.
Questions for staff on this?
Just one.
Go ahead, Chuti.
When we look at these, there's what, 16, 17, 20 pieces, parcels of property that are off of rather undeveloped roads? Do we look at how those properties down the road are going to have access? You know, how it's granted, or?
I, I spoke with, because Klondike Road apart from the highways, highway service, I'm sorry, from Highway 16 up until this line is the Forest Service road that Forest Service maintained, and then from right from?
Excuse me. You said it's a maintained Forest Service that goes up? That's the artery that serves that road? Okay.
Right, right.
Thank you.
And I spoke with US Forest Service, and he said that if the applicant or the homeowner in the area would like to widen the road, they have to get a permit from the US Forest Service. However, if the road that is the easement that starts from here to access this property, if they want to widen the road or improve the road, the Forest Service has no concern. So, it's more of the landowners in the area or HOA or, you know.
Okay. The only reason I ask is the property we're dealing with is somewhat in the center of the properties.
Right.
And it looks to me like every piece of platted property like that is allowed access, a legal access some way, and can't develop it without that under our county ordinances. And I just, it just seemed unusual that with the way the road goes through, I don't see a natural access for all the properties. That was my only thought. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
My main concern has nothing to do with what these people want to do, but rather the comment, he is withdrawing his conditional use permit to go ahead and attempt to get a planned unit development. He says he wished he had known that in the beginning, and there have been a number of cases that the applicant has been told the wrong information. They jumped through all the hoops, only to hit a brick wall and have to start over another way. And I wish there was some way to ensure that people in the planning department, when they're giving advice to people, that they are either positive of what they should do or that they ask someone else in the department what they should do. Because, you know, it's just not right. And this has been going on for years, so that's my comment.
Can I make the comment?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, with the conditional use permit or with all the permit that we have, now we require the applicant to set up a meeting with the planner. Before, we always like recommend to the applicant to speak with the planners. Sometime that's not happening, but now because of this issue, this problem, we rather, we require the applicant to speak with us and then tell us what they want to do. And sometime when, I don't want to say this isn't a bad thing, but sometime they change their mind later. So, the staff can only give the resource or help them the way with, with the way the landowner wants. But if we don't have inclusive detail, sometime this might happen.
Mr. Chair.
Don't need a long explanation.
So, my question would be if they do the PUD, they're essentially asking for the same thing that they're asking for with the conditional use permit. So, how do we address the neighbors' concern with the access, the road, and safety concerns? We're still going to have that, and I think we need to really flush that out before you go too deep in that PUD.
I have the applicants here if they would like to speak to that part.
Sure. Yeah, you can come up. I also have several speaker request forms. Go ahead.
Well, thank you for allowing us, my wife and I to be here today to address all of you and our neighbors. I see you. Hi, thank you for.
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead and state your name.
My name is Brett Wolfish.
Thanks.
And I see that the primary concern that everybody has is about the road and potential traffic increases. With our program, so, we run the Rushmore Music Festival, and that's what brought my wife and I to the hills four years ago. And we run a program for students who are 12 to 18, who are very talented string players and pianists. So, they are incredibly hardworking kids, and, you know, they're, they're coming out here to be inspired by the beauty of the hills and to really dive into their craft. And when we found Klondike. And when we found Klondike Road, we absolutely fell in love with the beauty that it has and everything about it. And we would never want to change, um, the quaintness that is naturally a part of, uh, this community. My wife and I are building our future home that we will live in, uh, on this property. And with, with, over the three weeks being, it, it's a residential camp, it's overnight. So we won't have cars coming in and out every single day, um, to any kind of major, um, need, you know, maybe a, a delivery to bring some food to the kids. But it really won't be anything of, of substance. And even before, before we have the A-frames built, uh, within the prop, the property, our students could stay with host families and, uh, of our own community members, which would be four to five kids per household, uh, being, being brought in. So we would have four to five cars in the morning, four to five cars in the evening, which is just really, you know, not a major concern for, for an increase of traffic. We're not looking at, you know, it's not like school where you have one kid per car being dropped off in the morning and then coming in and out throughout the day. Or, so while I appreciate that concern, it's not something that we're going to be, um, seeing. I see that one of the other questions that people had was about potential expansion in the future. And with a PUD, it would allow us to, to do that more, more seamlessly. But again, um, we're not, our, our goals as an organization are, are not to be having, you know, camps year-round. That's, and, you know, my wife and I, it's still going to be our home, so we want to live here as well. It might eventually go from a three, three-week program to a six-week program. So it's just, you know, three more weeks of beautiful classical music, uh, all contained within, you know, our own walls, which is not very loud. Um, or we might have a winter, like a Christmas break program for some very hardworking collegiate conservatory students. But again, it would all be residential and, you know, on our, on our property. So traffic concerns, just there won't be much increase. And I'd happy to take any other questions.
Go ahead.
I admire your cause. I, I think it's a wonderful program. I would just encourage you to try to get along better with the neighbors so we can, uh, progress a little easier in the future.
I appreciate that. And we're, we're, we're just starting to move in. And I look forward to the time that I have to get to know them better. Thank you.
Further questions?
I, I just want to clarify something. So as I understand it, you're not wanting to eventually have some kind of concert venue where people in large numbers from the neighborhood or the area of Rapid City and the Black Hills would come for some kinds of musical events. Is that right?
We're not sure. And, and for something like that, it would be, you know, again, e-even if we had a, a concert or a fundraiser up at, up, up at the house, it would be the, the same type of, you know, people as if we had a, a Christmas dinner at our home or Thanksgiving. It would be every now and again, um, you know, and even if we had, if, if we had something like that, we would always make sure to be mindful of the traffic. We'd try to arrange carpools, do things to, so we can mitigate traffic before, before it became an issue. Maybe even having people there to help direct things. We know it's a, a narrow road and there aren't many opportunities to turn around, uh, to turn around.
I appreciate that. And I'm, I don't have any doubt about your motives and intentions, but these kinds of things can sort of get out of hand. I mean, all of a sudden you say, my goodness, we could have several hundred people out here on an outdoor concert. What a grand experience for these children. And the next thing you know, that snowballs. So I think you need to be very mindful of that. And we do too, of course. So, um, as Ron said, I, I endorse your efforts and the intent and so forth. But I think you need to be very mindful of the fact that we're not talking about large public events as opposed to more or less instructional, um, situations.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Further questions?
I have a question for staff.
Go ahead.
If a PUD is approved, does that go with the property then? If, if let's say these folks sell it, um, the next people have a PUD in place or not?
Um, normally it'd go with the, um, the, the, the property. But, uh, because PUD overlay, it's, uh, pretty much a conditional use premises, um, multiple of them with conditions. So, um, we can also add that if the property owners, so the land, the land is sold, the planned unit development, um, overlay, um, can be, um, ended. So if the, um, the commissioners, you know, request or.
So you're going for an overlay versus rezoning?
Nope. Yes, correct. No, it's not, it's not rezoning. It's an overlay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
For staff as well, when this comes back, I'll, and I'll just be upfront. My concern here would be fire mitigation and ingress and egress and how you get out of this. All these folks that have these pieces of property have the right to develop them. And we're talking about it, uh, we, we cut off at forty now in our ordinance as far as no, uh, egress, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we're talking about half of that here. It really concerns me that we're bringing people from an outside area that aren't familiar with our fire danger levels unless we have a good program in that. Just wanted to let you know that when you come back up again, I'll be talking about that. Thank you.
Um, when, when the applicants, uh, submit his request, um, I routed to Jerome Harvey for that. However, I didn't get any comment back. I will make sure that, um, when the planned unit development overlay request come in, um, we'll, we'll forward that to, um, our fire administrator. And also I can talk to the applicant how to reach out, um, with him too.
That involves the road. The, the equipment keeps getting bigger and bigger to handle these fires. And that concerns me, the size of that road and handling a fire. Thank you.
Further questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, we do have speaker, several speaker request forms on this. The first one I have is Art Janklow.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. It wasn't on this one.
My apologies, member fourteen.
My apologies.
Is it James, James Woffen?
Woffen.
Woffen, sorry.
Yes, good morning. Um, yes, I, as a resident, we own, my wife and I own the, the first property as you come down on the left-hand side on Klondike Road. Uh, we have ten acres there. Um, our main concern is, uh, one is, uh, safety as well. Um, that is a one-lane, narrow gravel road that our neighbors maintain. I've yet, in the ten years I've lived there, I've yet to see the Forest Service maintain that first stretch from, from Highway Sixteen to, to the first easement. Um, I myself have three teenage daughters that drive that road as well. So I, I worry with the increased traffic on that road that, uh, I mean, it's already narrow enough. Um, I also worry about, um, I, I'm, I'm not sure, I, you know, I think you heard the applicant, he kind of changed his story two or three times this morning. Um, you know, at first it's just a three-week festival. And then when he was asked the question, now it turns into a, you know, another three-week festival. You know, how far does this grow? Um, the one thing I, I also worry about is, you know, they have, they have a social media page out there now, Rushmore Festival, um, on Facebook. It's kind of a resort that basically is what they're building. Um, and it, it worries me that, uh, not only me, I have private property, but my neighbors have private property. Are they out hiking? Are they out biking? And if they are, are they doing it on our land? So that's one thing I worry about as well. I also worry about the septic system, if, what, what they plan on doing for a septic system on, on that property is. So, thank you for your time.
I have a quick question for you, if you got a second.
Sure.
Um, I, I had a chance to read through some of the emails that I just received this morning. So you guys have a Forest Service entrance from Highway Sixteen to where the first private properties start. The Forest Service doesn't really maintain that. From then on, it's essentially a single-lane road. You guys don't have a road district.
Nope.
And so it's really on the honor and, and the goodwill of all the neighbors to maintain, plow snow, all that stuff.
That's correct. We all, yep.
Okay. Thank you. The next speaker request form I have is Walt, uh, Digmore. My apologies if I'm not saying your name right, sir.
He's pretty much covered everything I was going to say anyway.
Okay.
Concerned about the road, the extra traffic, people wandering around. Road going down there is terribly narrow. You know, the landowners, the people that live down there now, we're pretty courteous in and out. And but you start getting strange people going in and out, they're not going to know what we do or how we operate it. You know, somebody has to back up.
Sure. Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I got a question for staff.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Have you been down on that road and has Jerome Harvey been on that road? Just so that, uh, I'd like to see what Jerome, Jerome would have to say. B and C's our Pennington County Fire Coordinator. If you had an event, and if you did have an event, we don't want an event, but if you did, uh, I, I just envisioned some, uh, traffic jams on the pictures that I've seen.
I have, excuse me. So this picture is the, uh, uh, the staff picture. Uh, Dwayne and I went up there and then, yes, the Klondike Road is very narrow. Um, it's about twelve and a half foot wide. Um, as Jerome commented, I can definitely contact him and then speak with him regarding the concern about the traffic and the, um, safety. Um, uh, yes.
Okay, I just think it'd be nice to see in writing Jerome's, uh, thought on this.
Yes. I, I did route it to him and, um, I haven't.
Has he done to the property himself?
Um, I don't think so.
Suggest that? That's just my suggestion.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
One other chair. Um, I'm just kind of curious, from Highway Sixteen on Klondike Road, how far is, I, I mean, what order is this property, uh, on the road? Is it the third property, the fourth, the second? Do you have any idea?
Can you repeat the question again?
And what, where's the placement of this property from Highway Sixteen on Klondike? In what order would you come to this? In other words, are there many houses and, and dwellings before you get to this property? Is it the first one or second one? Or do you have any idea? I, I thought I looked it up in the map, but now I don't seem to have a record of it.
Um, that's one on this property right here. And then another one here. I believe that's a not so.
So, but when you turn off Highway Sixteen, you go down this narrow road, how, what, what properties do you hit first? Do you hit this gentleman's property? Okay.
Yeah, I believe so.
So most of the traffic for this event center or this, uh, would not have to go through, would, would not really interrupt, uh, very many people because they're going to be coming up, they'd have to wind their way through at some point. But the bulk of the traffic is going to be, uh, to this particular location and it's the very first stop on the road. Is that correct?
No, there's three.
Three before.
Before you get to.
Okay, okay. That was my question. Okay. I thought if it was the first one, we seem to have less impact.
Further questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just one, from our familiarity, my own, more or less, the Forest Service is only going to take care of the road until it hits the platted pieces of property. And they'll take care of it by letter and, and in the fashion they so desire. They actually give you kind of a idea of what they'll do, and that's all they're going to do. But as far as the road, once it gets onto these platted pieces of property, that's their responsibility. And it's still the old Forest Service path probably. But what I'm suggesting is that somebody, I think already, maybe they're out in the audience, I don't know. Somebody's taking care of that with a skid steer, something right now. And that's what's going on. Just for clarification, I, I see that. It, it, that's the only way it could be. You're not going to see the Forest Service, as far as I know, go down your private roads, period.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I, why was this platted without, I, subdivisions require road districts to be formed? I guess I'm wondering why. Is it because it's an agricultural district? Or what's the deal that we have this narrow road and, and the potential for a lot of places to be built out there?
How'd we get here is your question?
Hmm?
How'd we get here is your question?
How did we get here?
I don't know the answer to that. They, they look like, uh, they're shaped like mining claims, quite frankly, and, and various other things. It doesn't look like it was platted as a, as a large subdivision. Do you know the history on that, Chutima?
Um. Yes, that's an old mining claim and it was, um, platted back in the seventy, I believe. And I don't think there have been.
Improvements since then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Can I ask Brittany a question then, if they're mining claims? My question was just while you're walking up. We have to be very careful on how we proceed when it's mining claims. Is that not correct? In some directions about access and, and roads and things like that. In other words, each individual mining claim has its own specific federal rights and that sort of thing. That's where I'm heading with this.
Right, it comes more with use than it does the actual access. This was platted back in two thousand seventeen because there were some, some of the lot line reconfigurations. The majority of them, um, are mining claims. However, there was probably, and I don't know the exact history, I'll have to look back, but there was probably subdivision regulation variances, um, for the road improvements. And that's why they weren't done at that time.
So were there stipulations then that went along with those subdivision variances?
No. Typically, when they waive them, then they don't have to do the improvements.
No limitations is what I'm thinking about.
When they waive those improvements, there's, um, back in seventeen, they were probably just waived. Now, we've been stipulating them, but back then they were probably just waived. I'd have to confirm that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff before I continue on with the speaker request forms? Next speaker request form is, uh, Doug Zhang. Zog. My apologies.
So my name's Doug Zog. I lived back there for, I always suppose about five and a half years. Um, it's a really quiet residential area. It's kind of how we would like to keep it. Um, that's why you haven't seen much for improvements. When you start talking about the road, we like how small everything is and, and the nature around there anyways. Um, the road size, can you pull up my pictures? The, the good pictures that actually show how big it is? Those. So this is my truck. Um, and obviously you can see there's no way to get around that, maybe not even on a bicycle. Um, if an ambulance had to come through, a fire truck, if they're just releasing everybody from the festival, there's no way they're getting in there. There's maybe two or three pull-offs in a one-mile area for you to get over or to back up to so that somebody else can go by you. Uh, the first two hundred yards before you get to the platted areas is Forest Service. And they have done zero to maintain them since I've been there. I've called them, they, they don't do anything. Um, and getting back to emergency services, you know, if there was, if there was a large fire back by me and my place burned down because they just released thirty vehicles down the road, I would be kind of angry. And all the other residents would be kind of upset too, I would think. But, and then, um, as far as their off-season use, I don't believe that they're only going to use this for three weeks a year. You don't put, you know, over a million dollars of an investment into something like this and are never looking for other revenues or other revenue. Um, so I just, I don't think everybody's completely honest on what they're actually going to do with it. You know, what the future plans are, whether during the Sturgis Rally, if they're going to rent out a dozen rooms, you know, to make, to make money for a couple of weeks, you know. And, and there's a lot of other things they could do throughout the year, you know, to make other revenue than just the music festival. But that's all I got.
Any questions?
I, I have one question, really more of a comment, but you, you prompted me to think about this. Uh, assuming they anticipate larger numbers, so they improve the road. You know, that in a sense solves the problem that you illustrate in your pictures. But it also implies that much more traffic can come down the road. They then say to themselves, the road is fine, no complaints there. Let's have outdoor venues, big concerts. Let's pull traffic in here. So I don't want you. So I don't want you to get in a situation where, rather than tolerate some minor inconvenience for a few years, you force them to make improvements that demand that in order to justify those costs, they expand the venue in a dramatic way. Now, I know you can't anticipate that, I can't, we can't read their minds. And as you said, most businesses don't quite know what's going to happen. And when you say they're probably really not, they're planning bigger things, in their mind, they might, but they don't know. Businesses tend to grow in unpredictable ways. So I just, I wanna alert you to that possibility, that we need to think about that. I understand your concerns, I do.
Yeah, I just don't wanna ruin our residential area. Because that's really what it is. You know, their project sounds great, but just not in this location.
And it might be fine to tolerate that for a while if indeed they're just coming in with a group of kids and four or five kids in a car and the traffic is minimal. And yeah, once in a while, maybe rarely have to back up. You still can get an ambulance or a fire truck through there, you know. It might be better to tolerate that for a while and see what happens. Because circumstances might change and we don't know quite which way. So, anyway, something to think about is all for the residents. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like, Brittany, can you come up for a second? Our last commission meeting, we waived the Pennington County road requirement, which is a twenty-four foot surface. And we said, you gotta at least do the minimum because the fire mitigation, that was sixteen foot. This doesn't look like a road to me. You can call it a road, it looks like a trail or driveway. And this is my concern. So, to meet the minimal standards for a road in Pennington County, I think we indicated that that was sixteen foot.
I believe that that's what the board, when they did the subdivision regulations, they kinda met in the middle and said that sixteen foot would be reasonable in lieu of the twenty-four.
I'm just saying, if this was sixteen foot, I'd have a higher comfort level going forward. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Next speaker request form is Craig Osborne.
Good morning. Name's Craig Osborne. I live here in this area. This road that Doug's talking about here, the picture on the left, on the right side of his truck, it's not a cliff, but it's virtually really, really steep. If they were to widen that road, they would all have to do it into the mountain. As they're working on their property up there, they're coming across some ginormous rocks that are probably twice the size of your cars. So I think that would be a rather costly adventure. And in thinking about it and hearing some of the stuff that I've heard, the fire danger is something I didn't think of. The sewage, and there is a creek down there, how are we gonna protect the creek with the sewage? I think it's a great place to build a home. I am concerned about, like Doug said, if they're gonna put a million dollars or better into this, you know, you just, I don't have a million dollars to throw away or something and not make money to get my money back. If they somehow sell the property and it's already there and they have the existing stuff, who's to say, does somebody doesn't come in and say, well, this would be a great place to do a drug rehab program in the neighborhood? You know, we got peaceful surroundings, you know, they bring in rehab people. Private home, I got no problem with. It's the potential for future things that we cannot see and expect. I think that's about it.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this? Sure, please come up. And then I did note in the back of the room there, I'll come to you next.
Again, I would once, I would have you guys look into the plans on their social media page, Rushmore Festival on Facebook. It is a campus that looks like it's being the future plans of this. It's not just a single-family home. I agree with my neighbors. If it were a single-family home, I would have no problem with it. But they have on this, they have plans that take some, for cabins, small A-frame cabins. So just keep that in mind. I mean, yes, a single-family home may be built, but it's a revenue source. It may be nonprofit, but it's a revenue source. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir. Hold tight, Trutima, we got another speaker.
Good morning, I'm Scott Schutz. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Rushmore Festival. And I came in a little late, so I didn't hear all of the beginning, but part of it. The Katie and Brett don't take profit or money from this foundation that they put together for music. It's a three-week festival. So I know it's been about eight years in running so far that they came in. I've been on the board for just two. I'm an attorney. And from what I can see in my experience with it, and the reason I got involved with it, it's just a very rewarding and rich thing for the community in terms of the service and what they're giving the community in terms of music and to young people. So in that sense, it's a very valuable thing. And historically, through their seven or eight years that they've been involved, it's a three-week program that they have for kids. They bring them in. They are in the area for three weeks and they get some intense training in terms of practice and lessons. And they do some concert series. And the concerts have been traditionally around town. Now, I don't know if they plan to have all of their concerts up at this facility or not because in the past, it's been beneficial to have them in different places around the community so people can be exposed to classical music. So I don't know if it's the type of thing that is gonna be a burden to anybody in the community. It's, I think it's rewarding and it should be to those as well in the immediate community, the neighbors. So the concern that they have that it's gonna turn into a great big concert venue, that's not the vision that I have in my experience with it. And in knowing Katie and Brett, that's not what they're planning this for it either. So they do have little huts that they're building for practice purposes. They've got two of them now that they used this last summer. And they're planning to put those around the main structure. They need to have a housing structure for their students and their staff, which is not a great big, I think they had eighteen students this year and their goal is to have eighteen to twenty-four total. And it's a three-week thing. Bringing good music and good instruction and good teaching to classical music students in the area and around the area. And it brings people in that get exposed to the Black Hills and it's, I think it's a wonderful thing for the community. So I don't see a lot of downside. The road, yeah, that's an issue. It's narrow, but it's gonna be a short period of time that it's gonna be used. And I think there's ways to accommodate that for those short periods of time when it's gonna be used in that fashion. Lots of different ways to deal with that kind of thing other than shut it all down. So that's the comment that I have at this point and I appreciate you listening to me.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Just had a couple of questions for you, Scott. One, how many members on the board?
What do we have? Eight?
And?
Nine, I guess we have nine.
And then, are you involved in planning or just fundraising? Is the board involved in the planning?
We're involved in pretty much everything in terms of, you know, Brett and Katie have been involved in the design of their structure and the facility to accommodate what their purpose is. The board members meet monthly and some of our board members are on the East Coast. We do it by Zoom. But we get together regularly to go over the protocol that they have for their music festival, funding, all of those sorts of things. They do two yearly events to raise money. Traditionally in October, one in the springtime. And those have been held at the Doll Center, a couple of them. And it's, they put on a good show for everybody and they invite people that committed to come. They had a silent auction last year. So yeah, there's fundraising, there's the planning for the structure and the purpose of it and the future of it and trying to bring it to the area, high-quality music. They're just young people, they're in their early thirties and they've got doctorates in music, they're Juilliard and they're highly trained and they're just doing wonderful things as a young couple. And so that's why I got involved. I met them through my sister and because she had a student in music. And I'm just going to really appreciate what they do.
One last question. Do you think the board would then be involved, since you meet monthly, to look at sitting down with the neighbors and talking?
Oh, sure.
What I'm saying is something so these folks wouldn't have, be put out a venue where you could sit down and talk about some of the issues that are.
I think that would be very helpful.
Put on this table?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Helpful to sit down and ally any fears and concerns that there might be of some great big organization popping up out there that's gonna cause a lot of trouble. So yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Further questions? Okay, thank you, sir, for your comments. Before I move forward, this item is recommended for withdrawal of the conditional use permit. Is there any further questions, comments? Does anyone else want to speak on this item?
I think of the cabins on the left, they got eight or nine cabins there.
Sir, if you wanna, if you have questions, I'd ask that if you come up and we could try to get your questions answered.
Hi, so we have three different cabins that are in the, excuse me, that are in the potential plans for the future. Most of them are eight by eight and ten by ten. And then there's a twelve by twenty, which we would have to pull a permit for. And that's just depending on people's donation of those cabins. So we can make our, those are for classes, teaching rehearsals, et cetera.
How many? I didn't catch it.
We're thinking about hopefully nine, right now, zero.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
What are they gonna use for restroom facilities and shower facilities? Is that all gonna be located?
That'll all be in the main residence. So that'll be in the house of the two A-frames. So each A-frame, I believe, has two full baths. And then the main house has two and a half baths.
So could that be construed as three residences in a sense?
No, it's one, but we just think of them as different wings. It allows us to think of it and maintain organization.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Looks like we have one more. Please come up. And then state your name and for the record, please.
My name, my name is Trudy Brassfield and we own Lot B, Lot on the Brassfield subdivision. So my name is Trudy Brassfield. This is an agriculture. And what I am hearing in all of this is this is what we're gonna do now. But this is a campus and I love the concept. I love arts, I love music, I'm all for this. This is not the place for this. This is a residential. It's on a road that is maintained by all the residents. We haul gravel in, we all pay for it, we all have skid stairs, we all, we all take care of it. UPS will not go down that road unless they're a new driver. They will not do it again. One of the garbage people will go down, the others will not. And they all put their garbage containers on the first lot, Gwen Wathen's lot, right there. And he has agreed to let them do that. It's just a beautiful place. These people now are in Spearfish at the campus, which to me is an awesome. They have dorms there for the people, they have ways to go for their concerts. They give concerts weekly. And I think what's gonna happen is it's gonna be out here. We've heard so many open-ended questions. And I think that's what all of us that are on this road are concerned about, is the growth and the potential. And I think once you give an inch, they're gonna go a mile. And I agree. I love this. I love the Black Hills. I think the music program is a wonderful idea. And they're coming from New York and finding a beautiful place, the Black Hills. But I don't think this residential area is the place for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Ma'am, what other services? Garbage, do garbage trucks have to go down there? And then I assume septic tanks, are they, you know, companies that clean out septic systems, they gotta go down there? And so.
Yep.
And I assume if somebody's gonna build a home down there, you're gonna have to have cement trucks and others.
Right, and that's when the, we need, we have to know when they're bringing in all this big equipment. There was a Ben Breakfast started down the road and they brought a big moving truck in. They could not get the moving truck in to get the furniture unloaded to this Ben Breakfast. They had to make sorties with a pickup. If you haven't been down that road, there's just, you back up. And just like Craig said, there's, if they want to spend the money to do that, to widen the road, it's increased density and you're gonna have to do that. And the cost is incredible. So, is there any other questions from anyone?
I'll just make a statement that I'll probably be on that road later today.
Yep.
I wanna see it myself.
Yes, because, yeah, and they said, there's like three and you can either back up or if you see somebody, you can pull over and let them go. So yeah, we encourage everyone to please, please look at that. And in summary, I do, I applaud them. I think programs like this are awesome. But it's like in the letter, it says currently we have eighteen. And we propose and we don't know. We might have the concerts there and we might not. And I think there's a lot of unopened and unanswered questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Is there, please come forward.
Hello, I just wanted to respond one more time before we move on. Yes, we used to be at Black Hill State University. As an organization, the reason why we are not hosting our programs there anymore is our goal has been to make sure that every student who wishes to attend is able to regardless of their finances. And as an organization, we were having to pass on a cost of upwards of ten thousand dollars to our students, which was making it where many of them weren't even able to apply because they knew that should they be accepted, even with our generous scholarship packages that we were able to put together for them, they were unable to attend. So by us taking this on ourself, and like I said, this is, my aunt passed away from lung cancer three years ago and that's where we're getting the money to build this. It's entirely her legacy that we're trying to pass forward. And it's also our ability to make this entirely free to every single student that is accepted. It's entirely a project, we don't pay ourselves for it. It's not, you know, I mean, our goal is the future of music and children. And we cannot think of a more perfectly suited place because it's just so remote and so beautiful. And yes, we do need to, you know, work together with all of you to address the road concerns. We have them too, we want everybody to be safe, all of you and all of our students. And we're willing, you know, we're willing to see what we can do to make that happen together. We wanna be, you know, neighborly with all of you. We've, I've been so impressed with all the conversations I've had with every single one of our neighbors so far, just meeting you all on the property. You've been incredibly kind, incredibly helpful. And I do hear your concerns and like I said, we share them as well. So thank you for voicing them.
Mr. Chair. Just a question for Brett. Would you be hesitant to sit down with your board and yourselves and meet with the folks and make it something at a venue that they could get to?
No, we'd love to sit down. We wanna find ways to involve our neighbors because, you know, it's in their backyard. If anybody had, you know, better access to. It is, and.
Let me.
Let's just keep the.
Sorry, you can't interrupt.
No, and you're right. And we'd like to involve you with what we're doing.
Brett, you answered my question. I wanna continue. I want to continue on. Secondly, have you pursued any possible funding in the way of grants or whatnot to look at developing a road or a situation?
So we're building this entirely personally. This is not owned by the festival. This is a personal venture that we, that Kate and I are taking on.
I guess I was thinking of the board here. The board needs to be a working board and should work for you. It's a good cause.
Thank you. And, and we involve them. So we, we involve them with many things, especially fundraising for our students. Kate and I have taken on the, the, the land development ourselves with the idea that we can donate to the festival every summer for its usage. And that's why we're here today.
All I was getting is there's, there are avenues for that sort of money to develop that road if you wanted to get on the, and have the right people that can put the information together for you to submit it.
We would love to meet with everybody and if that's something that our neighbors would be open to, we would be happy to look into ways that we could look into doing that in the future.
Thank you, Brett.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Now, you can improve the road, but you got to remember when the people that live there now, they bought it under the premise that they wanted that quaint little road so you could make it 24 feet, but then that's not what they bought into. So you really got to remember going forward that you got to remember why these people moved up there in the first place. My second question would be, is there a second means of ingress and egress out of that if something got plugged?
Outside of Klondike Road, my understanding is that is the only way in and, and out for the present moment. I've been told that, I don't know if it's viable, but there might be a way through T.P. Gulch, but I don't believe that that's connected right now. And I think it goes through our neighbor's property. So I wouldn't want to ask them to do that.
Further questions?
I have one comment. How far are you from Rapid City?
With this property?
Yeah.
Uh, it is 16 miles.
15? Okay. So why didn't you put this someplace like 40 or 50 miles from Rapid City where it would have really been isolated? You would have had nothing but ag land around you, maybe a couple of ranchers who were just, you know, large tracts of land. Why didn't you do that?
We absolutely fell in love with the land. We found it by accident driving around one day and we said, oh my God, this is just.
Does it have something to do with the convenience of being 15 miles from a city of 150,000 people?
That, I mean, we do like having that access to, to the people and, and just, you know, even for our students for the airport. I mean, it's still, you know.
It's also the reason your neighbors didn't go 40 miles out of Rapid City because of the convenience. And when you don't do that, you have to expect development will creep your way. And so as much as I am sympathetic with your neighbors, they are not out north of Rogeford somewhere. They are close to a major population center for South Dakota. And one cannot expect that things will be tomorrow as they were today. Even though I lived out on Nemo Road for 25 years and it was a marvelous experience and it was isolated and it was great and I shared the same instincts as these people. But I think we have to be realistic about this. And I think that that's why infrastructure development must be, and I think we all agree, developed and planned so as to make the impact as minimal as possible. But we, we still have to wrestle with it. So I just wanted to make that observation both for your sake and
Thank you.
And your neighbors. Because I think that's.
Further comments, questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Please come forward then. Let's not do it from the gallery.
Want to comment to what Jim said?
Don't you think it's, it's your job to slow that growth down and maybe save the Black Hills and not destroy them? Thank you.
Your, let me answer that. I think it's a good question. Yeah.
It is a good question.
Absolutely, it is a good question. However, we're constrained by ordinances and regulations, which also tend to give some credence to a property owner, you know, and give them options irrespective of what the neighbors might like. We're not going to stray from those restrictions, those ordinance restrictions, but there's a lot of leeway in them. And that's because ultimately land use legislation is, is pro-development. It just is. That's why if you're going to move out in the country, move as far out as you can handle because that's where you're going to be the safest.
But what's wrong with your job being restricting that?
Well, I can't, I, we can't do things that are provided by ordinance to other property.
But at some point, you're going to have the Black Hills completely covered in housing.
You are absolutely right about this unless, I, I, I think of this myself right now.
You know what I heard? I went out for a walk last night.
I like both of these gentlemen, but we're getting off the subject.
We are.
Thank you.
Sure.
I, I don't want to belabor this, but thank you.
Yeah, and, and this is going to be, nothing is going to be voted on today.
This is recommended for approval of the withdrawal.
People are going to come back with the same stories.
Okay. Staff's recommendation for approval of the withdrawal of conditional use permit 2154 per the applicant's request. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second for withdrawal. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 11.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item number 11 is rezone 21-10 to rezone 10.95 acres from Agriculture District to Rural Residential, sorry, from Agriculture District and Rural Residential District to Rural Residential District. The applicants are Ian and Brad Estes. Their agent is fist land surveying and Janelle is in the audience if you have any questions for her. Site location is 500 Ridgeland Loop. Again, the subject property is 10.95 acres currently used for residential purposes. So when staff bases their recommendation, we evaluate current zoning and future land use within one half mile. I have the current zoning within one half mile up on the screen for your consideration. And it includes dark green is open space, light green is agriculture district, yellow is rural residential district and suburban residential, suburban residential district is brown. Future land use within the area is on the screen as well. Dark green is open space, tan is rancher district and yellow is rural residential district. The request was sent out for inner departmental review. The DODI Fire Department did respond. I did include that memo in your packet. They did have concerns primarily with the subdivision of the property and adding density in that area. However, the Board of Adjustment did approve variance 21-03 to allow 77 units on a designated road system. Rapid City Planning Department also responded stating that the city has approved a preliminary subdivision plan for the subject property and that the proposed rezoning is needed in order to approve the final plat. No other concerns were noted. Staff's analysis of the request is that current zoning within one half mile of the subject property identifies several parcels as rural residential district. The request to rezone appears to be in harmony with current zoning and future land use designations in the area as well as a comprehensive plan. Again, the subject property is within the three mountain planning jurisdiction of the city of Rapid City and the applicants are currently in the process of subdividing the subject property into three lots. With that, staff recommends approval of the rezone request.
Thank you. Question for staff on this?
Just one.
Go ahead, John.
Does DODI service this particular location?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Normally we don't, it looks like the intent is that they would subdivide this in, from one lot into three lots. And, and I realize that they, they got approval for the, they have 77 lots. Normally that has not been traditionally the case. What were the circumstances on the approval for having more than 40?
That was a Board of Adjustment decision to allow those. I think they took a, a lot of considerations into account when they did that, including future subdivision and the potential to subdivide further. I know there were some kinds of concerns about a secondary means of access.
But, I mean, I'm looking at the lot and I, I'm looking at the subdivision that's just, you know, to the north and west of the lot. And I'm sure they're thinking, oh, just make our lots about those sizes and go about our way. I understand all of that. I'm just, it, it, I'm surprised that, that, that that happened. And I can't imagine how it did without some circumstances, but maybe Janelle can fill that in. Go ahead.
Good morning, Commission members. Janelle Fink, I'm with KTM and Associates now. When we submitted the application, it was back in April and we were fist land surveying. To answer your question, the reason that this was supported both by the city for their 40-unit exception and I believe by the county commissioners is the owners are required to enter into a covenant agreement with the city of Rapid City to install fire sprinkler systems in any new residence. They have covenants regarding building materials for the properties and then they had a wildfire mitigation assessment. So they went through those three separate steps to ensure that they were offered this in, in compliance.
Thank you. That answered my question very well. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I do have a speaker request form from Lois Vogel. Vogely, thank you.
I'm Lois Vogely and I'd like to address some concerns about the rezoning of this property, especially public safety issues. First, the June 1st, 2021 staff report from Jason Thunison was in error when the flood hazard line was marked none because the family who just sold this property had a young man swept away from this property and drowned in the 1972 flood. Another safety issue is that Schroeder Road ends at the Forest Service. So Schroeder Road is the only means of ready egress. We've had major fires in the area, the Schroeder Fire May, in March of this year and the Westbury Fire. There's a potential for people having to evacuate, of course. Finally, this area will now have more than 90% more units than the Pennington County zoning, as you have just been addressing. I know of at least seven properties that could potentially be divided into three-acre parcels and four of these properties could be divided into many, many plots with the traffic septic needs, et cetera, that go with that. When is this going to end? Please consider public safety issues.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Lois? Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of rezone 21-15. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, just one for Jason. Can you point out or one of your drawings where the, the number of lots that DODI's talking about, how it comes to that many units? You know, can you give me? I can't, in other words, does it include the, the up in the corner here? I can't figure out how it comes to that many off of, are we talking about more than one access to Schroeder and stuff like that? Or I assume one because.
There's, there's only one access off of Schroeder Road for all those houses in there.
Only one? And it's all off of Schroeder?
Yes.
All off of Nemo, I believe.
Schroeder.
They're counting Nemo.
Schroeder comes off of Nemo.
All right. That's what I'm trying to come up with because I see there's still relatively large parcels of property unplanted or unveiled. It must be in the hands of one individual or several.
There are relatively large lots in that area that could be potentially subdivided in the future.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Jason, when you get to the, to the gate that was locked, the Forest Service gate, what's with the, the road at that point, the county road?
I'm not sure. Are you talking this area here with the lock gate?
I mean, in front of the property that we're talking about right now, what's with that road? Now, the one, the issue we had before this, we were just looking at a trail, but I'm just asking, is this a 24-foot road or a 20-foot surface?
Schroeder Road, I believe, is, I want to say, uh, I'm, I'm not going to be able to tell you at this point. I don't recall. I did the staff report earlier this year. Maybe Janelle has the details on that.
Go ahead.
Yes, Schroeder Road is currently developed, is, runs between an average of 22 and 24 feet in terms of the width of the surface. And it is on the county system for maintenance. And I would just point out that the rezoning is consistent with the future land use plan for this area. So we are in alignment and in compliance with the future land use plan that was just adopted this year by the Planning Commission and our county commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things I wanted to point out, when they set some of this criteria, it could have been pre-1988 when that whole area was a pretty dense forest. In 1988, I'd have to say over 60% of that got burnt. So your fire danger now compared to 1988 is probably a lot different. I think that's one of the reasons the commission granted the request to do the preliminary plat three lots.
I believe Jerome spoke to that in his memorandum to the board stating that this is an extreme fire hazard situation in this area. He has more concerns about it now than he did back in the 80s when Westbury Trails caught fire because of the increased development.
Noting no further discussion, staff recommends approval of rezone RZ 21-15. We had a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no?
No.
Just, just one no. Okay. Motion carries.
Agenda item 12 is conditional use permit 21-56 to allow the rental of 36 UTVs along with six backups and six slingshots, including a wash area, parking area, and 36 to 40 employees on the subject property. The property owner is ANH Enterprises. The applicants are Alex and Holly Nieman. Location of the subject property is 12670 Robbins Roost Road. It is 2.77 acres, currently zoned highway service district. Existing land use is commercial. Access is off Highway 35 or 385 and it does include special flood hazard area and floodway. The zoning ordinance lists seven factors the Planning Commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They're on the screen along with staff's responses. I'll read our staff's responses as we go through those, starting with number one. Will the establishment, maintenance or operation of the conditional use be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety or general welfare? Staff found no. The requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety or general welfare of the public. Number two, will the establishment of, establishment, maintenance or operation of the conditional use in any foreseeable manner substantially impair or diminish the uses, values or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted? Staff found yes. The requested use will take place primarily outside. The nature of the operation and maintaining, or the nature of operating and maintaining UTVs will increase noise in the neighborhood. This may substantially impair or diminish the enjoyment of other residential properties in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Number three, will the establishment of the conditional use impede the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district? Staff found no. The requested use should not impede normal and orderly development. Number four, are adequate utilities, access roads, drainage and other necessary site improvements provided? Staff found no. Access shall be provided via an existing approach per applicant site plan. A wash area is identified per their site plan. However, the runoff from this area was observed to be exiting the subject property and accumulating in the FEMA designated floodway and platted right of way. South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources has approved the existing, the two existing onsite wastewater treatment systems. However, both operating permits for those systems expired last year and that is included as condition of approval. Adequate areas identified for the required 40 parking spaces per the applicant site plan. forty parking spaces per the applicant's site plan. However, that does not include the rental vehicles. That is only for the customers and employees that work there. Number five, have adequate measures been, or measures, or will measures be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets? Staff found yes. The existing DOT-approved approach will provide ingress and egress as to minimize traffic congestion on Highway three-eight-five. All of the UTVs and slingshots are licensed to operate on public roads. Number six, will the conditional use conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located? Staff found yes. The requested use conforms to all applicable regulations of the district in which it is located with an approved conditional use permit. And lastly, number seven, is the conditional use consistent with the adopted county comprehensive plan? Staff found yes. Future land use is identified as highway service district. The proposed use is consistent with this district. As the property sits today, it does have building permits for a single-family residence, a forty-unit lodge, as well as a garage slash laundry facility. And again, it does have two onsite wastewater treatment systems approved by Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources. However, those operating permits are expired. It does also have five signed permits on the property, as well as two ordinance violations. One is relatively old, from two thousand and five, for having a recreational vehicle without a conditional use permit, and during my site visit, I did not see a recreational vehicle out there, so staff is working with the ordinance officer to resolve that one. And the second ordinance violation is for operating the current business that is there now, the requested use, without a conditional use permit, and approval of the CUP will resolve this violation. Request was now for interdepartmental review. County Highway did have concerns. They did state that adequate off-street parking must be provided. Parking in the right-of-way is not permitted. And they did have some questions too, as well as what's the plan for detention of runoff from the wash area, and will the rentals be licensed through Pennington County? Staff did verify that the vehicles are licensed to operate on roads in Pennington County. All of them have license plates. And again, the water detention, water detention is something I noted during the site visit, and it is included as a condition of approval. I spoke with the applicant the day of my site visit. He said that he would put a temporary means to collect that wastewater runoff, or not wastewater, I'm sorry. So, actually, I have site pictures. So, this is the wash area. It is located here. You can see they did have active wash operations going on that day. You can see the water is draining off the south side of the apron and continuing down the right-of-way and collecting in, this is the designated FEMA floodway. People are driving through that. The neighbors, I did receive neighborhood complaints in the form of a phone call, as well as an email, mainly addressing this runoff. They did also have concerns about pressure washing operations going on later into the night. The applicants have stated that they'll have business hours from seven in the morning till seven at night. The neighbors' concerns are addressing power washing after hours, so after seven o'clock at night, they still have their cleaning operations going on after the UTVs are returned. And these are more site pictures of the new park, the UTVs on the grass in front of structure. The county floodplain manager also had comments stating that the proposed use must not disturb the area identified as special flood hazard area, and any runoff from the UTV washing operation must not be allowed to enter any waters of the state. And again, that is addressed as a condition of approval. Staff's analysis of the request is that on June ninth of this year, the violation wasn't opened because they did not have a conditional use permit to operate the business. County ordinance enforcement opened that violation. On September second of this year, the applicant did apply for the request. Last week, September twentieth, staff received a phone call from the concerned neighbor, and then conducted a site visit a couple days later. We did receive an email from that concerned neighbor this morning, and I believe that it was included and presented to you also this morning. With that, staff finds minor issues with the applicant's request that should be controlled by the conditions of approval. The requested use appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in highway service district. However, there are multiple lots on this property that are not zoned highway service and that abut it. I believe the neighbor that had concerns was from this property here, or this one. But with that, staff does recommend approval with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I have about three. I'm trying to address to you, but I want to make sure that I get. The wastewater, wouldn't we have normally, if this had not been down the road here, we're talking about giving them thirty days of approval, current operating permits and whatnot, wouldn't we have normally sent this through DE and R to review because of the change in the business?
I believe D A and R approved it for a hotel.
Yeah, motel. That's a long ways from what we're doing, especially with rinsing, washing things. I guess that's what I'm saying. I think when we go through a normal process, you would have had on a commercial business, DE and R look at this, and we wouldn't be talking about this. Okay. Secondly, parking, and I did bring that up to you. One of the things that's got to be considered here is, we've got forty-eight rental vehicles that have a license plate, let alone renting them with the vehicle that's being parked there. And I would assume most people park their vehicle and come pick it up. So I think that's why highway department's concerned. There's already been some parking in the right-of-way as far as our highway department goes, and I think that's why they commented that. But if you looked at forty-eight vehicles, and we're talking about twenty spaces and twenty for employees, I think you're talking about a considerable amount more parking. They have plates. There's also vehicles that break down and are awaiting repair that are parked there with a license plate on them. We can't have it both ways. These vehicles either have license plates so they can do what they want, or are supposed to do, or not. They're a vehicle. So I think we're dealing with a lot more vehicles than your conditions indicate, in my mind. And then I have one that I didn't have time to bring up to you. What about the storage and handling of fuel? They've got to be handling quite a bit to rent these vehicles.
I did bring that up to the manager when I did my site visit, and I asked him if they had any fuel stored on the property, and he said less than five gallons, just in case that they needed to go retrieve a vehicle. They said their vehicle, the way their business operations are, is that the renters will bring the vehicles back fully fueled, and they said they typically get their fuel from Three Forks. I believe the applicant is in the audience, if you have any questions.
I guess most rental car companies have some each way. That was my questions for you, Jason. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So I've got a lot of, this is my district, and that was a bed and breakfast built by Larry McCaskill. And, you know, it just really fit in there with the creek, and Larry eventually sold it to Mr. Nygard, who created Valiant Winery or Stone Faces. And there again, that's in harmony with the other wineries, but the current use, I guess I got involved, and one of the neighbors said, look, you know, I'm getting all this runoff and mud and destroying my property. So I asked Dwayne, your code enforcement officer, what was going on? And Dwayne said, well, June first, they got their first notice. They ignored it. July ninth, second notice, they ignored it. The letter, this letter, I'm going to read this. This is what Dwayne reported to me. Paul Lyman, the father of the owner of ANH Enterprises, came and stated that his attorney had looked over the zoning ordinance and said he didn't need to apply for a permit. Due to being classified as an amusement through their insurance and listings, I told Mr. Lyman that the CUP for the property to rent UTVs was still needed, no matter what their insurance attorney was telling them. He took a CUP permit and then said he may not get back to me until November, and then they would be done doing what they're doing. That's not a good answer, in my opinion. That's not a, that's not good management. It's not good business practice. Make us wait until November at his convenience. So here's a little dialogue that I put together this morning. So we got forty-two UTVs, six slingshots. At present, the parking and staging area for the forty-eight machines is a grass yard that drains into Spring Creek, a local fishery that underwent a major environmental study by Respec Engineering and the Penning County Planning and Zoning Department a few years back. I was on that committee as well as Brittany. Most rental operations I'm aware of do not stage their vehicles on a yard, especially forty-eight vehicles. An added condition could be that this staging area be asphalt or concrete paved with aprons that would guide off any runoff of grease, and a sand trap that would be cleaned on a routine basis, similar to the ones found in all-car wash bays in Hill City and Rapid City. The new Somerset Polaris facility located on I-90, they utilize enclosed wash bays, and they have sand traps in the proper disposal of the waste. They don't go out there with a aluminum shovel and throw it in a trailer and take it to Custer County and throw it away. An added condition could be that the designated wash area be an enclosed wash bay equipped with a sand and grease trap that would be cleaned and inspected on a routine basis. This would eliminate the noise and byproducts that is dirt, mud, manure, oil, battery acid, antifreeze, and gasoline. Hauling waste to Custer County is not an appropriate solution, in my opinion, for a hundred-and-eighty-day operation that has forty-eight machines. I suggest a condition be added that would address the onsite maintenance of the machines, which would include routine oil changes and other fluids, battery acid, antifreeze, power steering fluid, power brake fluid, and grease. If oil changes are performed onsite, where's the used oil, where's it handled, how's it handled, where's it stored, and how's it disposed of? What other fluids are stored onsite? I suggest a condition be added that would address the fueling of the forty-eight machines. Need to identify the means of storage, above ground, below ground, capacity, just the same thing that Charlie had a concern with. Means of dispensing the fuel and the location that the dispenser locations situated, what safety measures are being employed in the event of a fire. One hundred and eighty days, forty-eight machines, five-gallon tanks, forty-three-thousand-two-hundred gallons divided by two, twenty-one-thousand-six-hundred gallons. But you've explained that a lot of those come back, so I can relate to that. But still, I think fuel needs to be addressed because you're on, you're on Spring Creek, which is a really nice fishery. And when you get forty-eight machines, they drip. You go to a parking lot, you see oil all over. You see antifreeze. You park those on a yard that drains in the rapid, or Spring Creek, you can't tell me that there is not some residual going in the Spring Creek. The bottom line is that this operation should not have been in operation until the CUP was approved. It would appear to me that in this case, it was easier to ask for forgiveness than permission. So that's my two bits worth. I'm not really in favor. I won't support this at all.
Mr. Chair, just for clearness, and I'm sure you'll tell me I'm correct, because I've had some from me. Handling of fuel and storage of fuel is not within the county's auspices. It's within the state, as I understand that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to let the commissioner know that that's not something we can throw in a condition, per se. That has to be inspected and decided by some other authority. Thank you.
Has the applicant indicated to you how they, so this conditional use permit is to be reviewed at the October eleventh, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting to ensure adequate controls have been placed to prevent runoff from the wash area from leaving the subject property? Have they indicated to you how they intend to do that?
They said they would put barriers up to capture that water and redirect it over to this other side where the parking lot is kind of sloped, where you can see it, it kind of goes down the middle here, and one side will drain off this way, and one side will drain off the other. They would barrier this side off to the south near the road and have it captured and draining off to the other side.
But the requirement from the D A and R is to not allow any of the wash-off to get to the creek?
To go off of the subject property. And when I was on the site visit, I did not notice any drainage going into the creek.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
But Jason, they take the waste, the manure, the mud, they scoop it up and put it on the trailer, and they take to Custer County. So why not just go someplace else in Pennington County?
I believe the property owner owns property in Custer County, and
But he owns this property.
I did, correct. Yep. So I did research the South Dakota codified law on car washes, and an acceptable use of this residual mud and dirt is for filterd on a property. So I don't believe that they're out of line in doing that.
Well, I would, there again, at least at a minimal, continue this until they can answer some questions. I think the biggest complaint that I've seen in this letter was just the noise and the runoff. When you clean forty-eight vehicles, it's got to go somewhere. I mean, it's just got to go somewhere. It just doesn't evaporate. And I think they really need to focus and address that and tell us how they're going to do that before we sit there and approve this today.
They also did state their offseason is coming up, and that they would be building a more substantial wash rack where it would be self-contained bay-style, so they would be able to contain some of the noise, and they would have traps on either side of this pad to capture any kind of runoff, so that it could be cleaned. A more permanent solution, I believe.
So when you say self-contained, would that be enclosed, like a car wash, where you can shut the doors so the neighbors don't have to hear that?
I don't know the details on that. I would ask the applicant to come up and speak to that.
Well, I think out of respect for the neighbors, that ought to be at the very best a minimal. I just don't like the way these folks have treated people, not responding to our code enforcement officer. Gives me a bad smell.
Sir, can you answer those questions? Go ahead and state your name for the record, too.
Alex Neiman, owner of Adventure Rentals. All right. That, right there. So our future for the washing and the concerns of our neighbor is, sorry. All right. So right now, we have a twenty-two-and-a-half horsepower pump system that drives a twelve-gallon-a-minute power washer with four guns to be able to clean and maintain all the machines. All maintenance, as far as oil changes and stuff, are done within the garage bay that has a drainage system into our septics for that. But we do not put any hazardous materials down that. That goes into a chemical container, gets hauled up to Custer, where we have a full-time maintenance facility. And then we contract with NAPA up there in order to have them haul away the oil. We are also looking at utilizing and recycling that oil as far as heat is concerned in our maintenance facilities. That's what goes on most of the time in the offseason. So without touching anything, because we were trying to put a, we didn't know floodway. Jason was the one was able to tell us that that is a FEMA floodway alongside the creek. We had, we were going to put a gravel road along there, and that was one where we did not know that we weren't allowed to do that. He luckily caught us literally five minutes into construction. We stopped all construction. We rezoned, or we redid our plans for this year. We thought that we were able to operate there. We told them how the operation was going to work, as far as not him, but had talked to. And then that's when Dwayne contacted us, and I spoke with Dwayne on the phone, let him know that I was working on the conditional use permit, and then we got busy. Everybody in the hills did. Paperwork got backlogged by the time the second one had been there. And I apologize for my father coming in. When we are operating for liability reasons, I do not leave property. This is my first time in Rapid in six months. So, at least business hours-wise, I'm open seven days a week, seven to seven. I am at my location in Custer at five-thirty in the morning. I do not leave until, minimum, eight-thirty, nine o'clock at night. I oversee all the maintenance for the machines, because it's not if, but when, is what everybody always tells our business. So I've seen every oil change. I've seen every roll cage fix. I've seen every accident, and I respond to every single one myself out there. So the wash, power washer is going to go inside that garage bay to mitigate. We are going to change the motor over to a garage bay to mitigate. We are going to change the motor over to a car motor so that it is, uh, less decibels, I suppose. We'll soundproof it. And so the only thing that our neighbor should be able to hear, our one neighbor, is basically a fine mist sound of how the machines are washed, just water coming out of hoses. As far as that, we figured the runoff, which has never made it off our property or the creek, because since we figured it was a floodway, we monitored that a lot and we tried to kind of build bigger barriers and stuff. It has been wet on that property, both rain and with us washing. So there has been more runoff getting into that area. It's the natural flow of where the rain goes too. Our goal is going to be to put in a sand trap car wash. We weren't sure what the permits and stuff were going to be to do that or what to dig. We would like to put the sand and oil trap in. We have already met with the county and the city in, uh, Custer County where we've been operating now for four years. Um, and they approved us to be able to do that. It was again, an approval process that we weren't sure that with our county and Pennington County, which is obviously much more vast and structured than our little rural county of Custer is doing. So whatever we need to do, uh, the works have already been done. I've hired the concrete guy and approved the dirt work to put it in. It would just be whether or not the zoning and planning tells us where we can put that sand trap. The washing will always still happen outside, uh, just because of the volume of spray, um, to contain, uh, to house the vehicles while they're being washed would be a nightmare, um, as far as. It takes a lot of pressure to be able to take some of the dirt grime and this time of year, we call it recycled grass off of the machines. Um, any other questions there?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So if you put the wash bay inside of the garage, and I applaud that, how do you handle the, you know, car washes have a sand and, and
Yes.
an oil. So are you going to have a drain and a trap in there?
So the pump system is going to go into the garage. We're going to knock that concrete out, change the leveling, because it's not leveled properly. Eldon, uh, is the winery. He's the one that came down, spoke with me, uh, walked the property with me, um, and, and said where it was and wasn't and how you could utilize the property that he had to work, uh, through this system. Cause I, I actually called him and so we worked out some stuff. Um, cause initially when we purchased the property, we were going to put a, where the oversized parking lot is, we didn't know that was happening, the floodway. We thought it was just in the hundred-year flood. Um, what's that thing?
Special flood hazard area?
Yeah, special flood hazard area where you could build, but you, the permits are a lot easier. When we contacted, uh, zoning, not zoning, um, uh, I apologize for my words, uh, the surveyors. The survey, surveyor said that it is basically impossible to ever do anything in a floodway. So that changed our program of putting a structure down on the oversized parking, which almost lent itself to a fully enclosed maintenance slash wash bay to now going to have to adjust and build off the backside of Fermentson where all the water actually drains into. So, uh, the sand trap area would be a series of two grates that would be able to catch in the middle of the garage and the, uh, building there. Um, it would essentially be a non-enclosed car wash. That's what we want to put there so that we can clean it out. Then we don't have to worry about oil, gas, and battery acid settlement, um, which is all, yes, you cannot ever get away from that with vehicles. So that would be a much more.
So you mentioned that, uh, you and your neighbor had some interaction?
One time.
So he provided a letter to all of us up here?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just looking at this one sentence. He says, "There has been interaction and so far, nothing but blind promises that things will change." So, I mean.
I think he might be, I've never actually interacted with that neighbor.
I'm just saying what he put in the letter, that's all.
That's fine. I can only tell you.
When you guys first opened the Hill City Pavilion, uh, if I recall, you're, uh, estimating one hundred machines? I believe that, I believe that's what that article said?
Just like, uh, the commissioner over here said at the beginning, we can never tell how business went, uh, or where business growth is going. Um, the lot with the filter and all that stuff on the other side, because this doesn't show our whole property line, um, is a hill and a gully. Yes, in the future, if it warrants it and the business can float it, because it is very expensive to have these vehicles and the liability that we're under is tremendous. Um, but I can tell you that we are the highest rated, safest one in the world. And it's because we put all this technology and all this time into what we do. Our vehicles go out with digital mapping systems so people can always know where they are and how they can be back. Uh, we educate them on all the rules of the county, the private property owners, as well as the, um, forestry rules. And so there's...
That's one point that I want to make out. I don't know too many car lots that are on a yard. And I really, and you could probably agree, it'd probably be a, for that type of business, an asphalt or cement or gravel at the very minimum
Planning would allow us
to park your machines.
To do it. But with, you said this is your district and so I'd point out to the campground that has them up on the grass and also the car wash that used to have them but then moved across the street. Both, yes, gravel. And that was our plan, but it was in the floodway. So we have to go this way now.
Well, I think at a minimum, uh, as a condition that wherever you park and stage those, it should be a, a hard surface or at a minimal gravel.
We believe that too. We do not want to disrupt the grass. Thing used to look like a golf course.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Is it Alex or Alec?
Alex.
Alex. Alex, in all fairness and to, to what the commissioner's saying, if this had been done
Mm-hmm.
before you opened, you'd have the answers to these questions.
Yes. And that's what I explained to Duane when I talked to him on the phone is that we were happily
But you did indicate you knew we were a lot more structured than Custer County.
I did. And, um, that was, I get, we, that construction for that road happened before we opened the doors and we did.
I mean about the use of the property is what I'm getting at. You're somewhat restricted now because of that floodplain. I realize that. I agree with what you're saying. You've got to be restricted about the parking that I spoke about, because I saw you shake your head a little bit back there when I was bringing up. These are all licensed vehicles.
Yes. And can you explain why that, like, for, why that concerns you with my licensed vehicles opposed to my customers?
Because that's how we look at parking.
Okay.
That's how we look at parking. You also have, how many vehicles you have right now that you're working on or set to the side? Looks like a lot more than when you opened.
Yes, people sometimes make mistakes.
To me, like, there was six, ten of them at one time during the summer. I, I even saw there was, uh, almost equal. There were back there waiting either some sort of service and repair.
Some of that has been due to COVID and trying to get parts. So we have to use our other machines to keep them.
I can understand that.
That normally we wouldn't have more than two vehicles that would be under maintenance that, well, the vehicles are always under maintenance.
Okay. Did you drive by this morning? You know, there was four of them outside of the row towards the, the stream again. There was four of them on that outside row. You had your rental units in here and there was four units that were out there when I went by this morning.
I did notice that. I did not make a call to them yet.
So somebody else is gonna, you're gonna explain to them not to do that?
Well, so inside the trees is where
Right.
they're supposed to be. I, we do have some employees and other people. Now, supposed to be. It was explained that we were allowed to use the floodway as long as we didn't disrupt it or permanently park any structures there for an, uh, an abnormal amount of time, twenty-four, forty-eight hours. So as long as they were coming and going, it's still our property. We can still utilize it. We just can't put permanent structures out there, which a hundred vehicles along that stream, whether they're there for twelve hours or twenty-four hours is too much structure. But three or four machines.
Okay.
They're not.
I understand what you're saying. You're saying you may have a reason why there was four vehicles out there that, because I noticed you moved them back off of it.
Yeah.
And that is the first time in a long time I've seen the four, I'll give you the bread and visit it out, sitting out there farther. But I was surprised to see them when I came by this morning.
And Jason and I had a conversation about this. And like he said, as long as a road wasn't starting to form, but as soon as the grass started to mat down enough that we noticed a road, we moved them up back on. I mean, it's a marking thing, you know? People see them from the road, they pull in. That was biggest utilization of the property is it's in an area that drives tourism due to the successful nature of those wineries. It's the one place on Highway sixteen outside of Custer State Park that stops vehicles as a destination.
All right. Then my last concern was on the Forest Service rules. Uh, and, and I'm not noting this that you're the only one. I don't believe the rental outfits are trying to stand by the Forest Service rules. I live higher in the hills and it's like, it's like a herd of locusts coming to me.
I know.
And it's getting out of hand. And, and all it's going to do is create more problems for the people that are in the legitimate business and the safety of it and whatnot.
Yep.
Because people are not honoring the property rights or the instructions
Mm-hmm.
from the Forest Service, especially when it rains.
Especially when it rains, yes.
When it's dry and these vehicles are covered with mud,
Mm-hmm.
you're not hiding. You were somewhere else with me. I mean, you should do that. Shake that down, say, ask them where they were at, that they could find mud.
Mm-hmm. Um, I had a very lengthy conversation just actually yesterday with Eric Nelson, the lead ranger in our area about if we would be able to prosecute them for that.
Mm-hmm.
And unfortunately, that's the same shackles that you guys are dealing with with these property lines and stuff is unless they physically catch them doing it, they can't do it after the fact. Now, some people
I have to tell you, I believe you. I don't think you're getting support from the Forest Service. They claim they have three officers and they can't keep up with it. I don't see them doing anything even in a parking lot.
Yes. I, and I asked if that would be something where we could call down, because our customers are explaining that if that mud reaches their radiator, their windshield or their roof, they hit it and it's destroying our resources. That I would invite all of you to come and listen to our safety orientation with all of our vehicles.
Thank you. I don't want to go on about that. This is your request, but I do have some concerns about the amount of vehicles that are licensed versus what we look at proper parking. Thank you.
And I can, I can put in a paved parking lot. It would just be, you know, permits and stuff of whatever we want. Essentially where the customer parking is, we can, we've been using that as parking. We figured by parking on it, the grass was going to die. We do plan on gravelling that and then we can go on the other side of not Robin's Roost, but our property goes over here.
I would make sure because the, our highway departments are looking that you know where your property corners are at, because the rest of it's right away. And they're going to be unhappy if you're, you're parking in it. Thank you.
Further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion to continue this until such time. I see more detailed plans on that wash facility.
Okay.
And, I mean, this is nice, but it, uh, you know, it's very, very vague. And I would like to see a condition that within a certain timeframe, that all those machines would be parked on a, at a minimal, a gravel parking lot. Now, uh, you know, the gas, we talked about the gas and the oil changes. I'm good with that. But those are the two concerns that I, uh, that I have.
Fair concerns, and we will address them.
When did you want to continue it too?
What's that?
When did you want to continue this too?
It'd be to the next meeting.
To the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to continue, um, agenda item twelve, conditional use permit twenty-one fifty-six for the discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item thirteen.
I'll get you that in just a second.
Before we start item thirteen, do we want to take a ten-minute break? We have a lot of items after this yet that may take additional time.
I would have liked it to be board twelve.
All right. So we're going to reconvene then at, um, eleven fifteen. Well, it's eleven fifteen. We'll, uh, reconvene the meeting. Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is, is item thirteen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, Brittany Molitor. Item thirteen is Plan Unit Development Review, CU sixteen oh three, to review a plan unit development to allow for a specialty resort development to include uses such as vacation home rentals, weddings, receptions, picnics, family reunions, parties, single-family residences, bed and breakfast, storage, gift shops, spa, cabana, bistro, detached accessory structure with living quarters, duplexes, et cetera. The applicants and landowners are Dan and Nancy Evangelisto, Century Home Crafters LLC, Century Land Holdings LLC, and Summer Creek Inn LLC. Um, staff is recommending that we continue the review of Plan Unit Development, PU sixteen oh three. The applicants have submitted a major Plan Unit Development Amendment to address several conditions of approval that they would like to amend. Um, this amendment will be heard at the October eleventh, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on this? Recommendation is to continue this item to the October eleventh, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. Is there a motion?
Go move.
Second.
Motion and second to continue further discussion. Noting none, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item fourteen.
Item fourteen is Rezone, RZ twenty-one dash twenty-six, to rezone six point six eight acres from suburban residential district to urban residential district. The applicant is Pink Cabin LLC. The agent is KTM Design. Uh, the location of the property is surrounding the Murphy Ranch Estate subdivision, south of Longview, Longview Road. The current zoning is suburban residential district. It is vacant of any structures. There is no special flood hazard area on the subject property. If you do look at the future land use within one half mile, it is suburban residential district, which is the brown, low-density residential district, which is in orange, unit development, which is blue, and a commercial, excuse me, highway service district, which is in the pink. Um, this was routed around through the interdepartmental review process. No concerns were noted. Uh, the request for the rezone was to allow, um, some apartment buildings. The current zoning and future land use in the area identifies the subject property as suburban residential district. Um, I did do, um, there is a proposed and existing multifamily dwellings within hu- one half mile of the subject property. And there, there have been several letters of concern closing this request. Um, if you do look up there on the, there is a proposed eighty-four unit apartment complex on the corner there of Reservoir Road and Longview Road. That is part of a planned unit development, uh, for Trailwood Village. Um, there's a church, fire station, and a West River Electric substation within the vicinity. So staff is recommending approval of Rezone, RZ twenty-one dash twenty-six.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Just one quick one. Go ahead.
You know, aside from all of the complaints that people have about it, I really think it's critical that you advise each and every person that contacted you regarding who, who gets legal notice. They're assuming everyone gets legal notice and they need to have it explained to them, you know, about the linear footage from the subject property. That, that would help, I think.
Right. So the rezone is a statutory requirement that all property owners within five hundred feet of the request are notified.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you need to let the other people know that because they're saying they weren't informed, but yet they weren't required by law to be informed. I'm, I'm assuming you
Correct.
did it according to oil.
Correct. So we don't notify just because it's within a subdivision. Not everyone in the subdivision gets notified.
I'm just saying the people that wrote, she paid them the courtesy of saying, "The reason you weren't informed legally by registered mail is because you fall outside." That's all I'm saying.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Brittany, when we talked about this earlier, there's some, uh, there's some also discussion about people in the road district or part of the road district being informed, because I think that was a major concern of some of these people was the increase in traffic and, and would that road district or the road system handle that additional traffic flow?
Right. And I did forward the routing request to the president of the road district after the last meeting.
Okay.
So they were not, the road district was notified and routed.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chair, just one.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Um, I see some reference. I see some reference and and maybe I get lost in these little details, but you call it urban.
Residential.
But do you separate it? And in other words, when I'm looking at urban, I'm looking at urban residential. I don't see any in the.
In the future land use, we only have one parcel in all of the county that has a future land use designation of urban residential district. The purposes of the urban residential district is to allow higher density residences without having to get a conditional use permit. So in the suburban residential district, if you wanted an apartment complex or a higher density, so this would would require them to not get a conditional use permit for the structure.
So suburban, then this is a category that's more restrictive than or urban is more restrictive than suburban or is it a category under suburban?
It's a higher density than suburban. So some of the road improvements requirements are more restrictive. The road was are more restrictive, but you know, subdivision regulations.
Okay, all I was getting at is if I tried to research under our our listings, you know, the the maps, I don't I don't see the definition of urban. It's not there yet.
It's a new residential district that was adopted with our comprehensive plan.
Okay, so that makes it my second question that I didn't have one. Then in other words, if we were to to put the urban in there, it would be in a different color.
Correct. It's like like a darker gray color, yes. And there isn't any urban residential district right now. This is the first rezone request that has ever been made for urban residential.
That may answer. Thank you.
Could you, one of the letters that was submitted talked about addressing some of the concerns with the road, had discussed phase two with thirty-nine lots and then what they called the phase one move.
Yes, there is actually she, Ms. Kelsey is actually in the audience and she can speak to it.
Okay.
She is the engineer that has been working on this project.
Okay.
The entirety of the project because there's been several phases to this project. I think there's at least been seven approved so far. There's more coming. This property could be more single family residences also or higher density residences. So I'll let her speak to that.
Other questions for staff?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Do you happen to know, because I know some of this is, well, what roads would be in the Murphy Ranch Road District? Because it's not all. The majority of those roads are within the road district boundary and this property is within the road district boundary.
Further questions for staff? We do have numerous speaker request forms for this. We'll go ahead and get started. Richard Bend, Benz?
I'm Richard Ben. I live at thirty-five thirty Western Road and I'd rather have somebody from our district speak before we do, before most of us general public do, so.
You know, I didn't see anybody that listed themselves specifically as as from the district. I do recognize a gentleman in the back of the room that I think that was on the road district before, but I don't remember his name.
Brandon, if you want to come up then.
That's that's fine.
I was originally in Brandon's spot.
Okay.
Prior to, I was one of the original board members.
All right, we'll let we'll let Mr. Jensen start.
I'm Brandon Jensen, president of the Murphy Ranch Road District and Emery is a board member.
Director. Fifty-nine twenty-four Springfield.
Okay. Go ahead.
Some of this might be repetitive because I wrote this down a few days ago, so anyway, yes, good morning. I'm representing the Murphy Ranch Road District Board as again, President Brandon Jensen is here, Vice President John Hamilton, Secretary Connie Fisher, and the two directors, Josh Drain and myself. The board is financially responsible for snow removal, sanding, sweeping, all road maintenance, and mowing Longview Road ditches. So when the current board was in office, the road district was not receiving adequate tax revenue to sustain the maintenance. So in two thousand twenty, the board raised the taxes in order to begin needed road repairs in August of two thousand twenty-one. So at that time, we sealed a third of the current roads with plans to seal another third in the spring of two thousand twenty-two and then the final third in the fall of two thousand twenty-two. And that's estimated at about forty-eight thousand total when it's done. Remington Road off Longview, that's in desperate need of repairs right now and that's estimated at about fifty thousand. But the added snow removal and the sweeping and the sanding for the additional roads on Remington, Knuckle Duster, Deringer, Black Powder, Enfield, Weatherby, and Browning has caused the road district to postpone the needed repairs on Remington up to two thousand twenty-three. So it should be noted also that with the addition of these new roads comes the additional expense of maintaining the drainage bond also and the vacant open space donated by the Murphy family. So in the board's opinion, the originally planned thirty-some single family dwellings on the six point six eight acres would create more revenue than the multifamily dwellers would, in our opinion. The additional revenue would prevent additional tax burden to the current single family homeowners and it would result in less traffic flow, more safety, and the single family dwellings would eliminate the risk of decreased home values. So as an elected voice for the residents using the Murphy Ranch Estates roads, the board opposes the rezoning of any part of the existing Murphy Ranch Estates. The current six point six eight acres west of Springfield Road does not currently have any road access. So creating an access for multifamily units to Springfield Road to one of our two existing accesses to Longview would cause a financial and road flow burden to the district. So having been elected by the residents to uphold the physical and safety responsibility of Murphy Ranch Road Estates, it is imperative that the board stands in objection to this rezoning. The following five elected board members of the Murphy Ranch Road District would appreciate a no vote on rezoning. And again, that's Brandon Jensen, president, sixty forty-two Springfield Road, John Hamilton, vice president, sixty-one twenty-one Flitlock Court, Connie Fisher, secretary, thirty-three sixty-nine Remington Road, Josh Drain, director, thirty-three seventy Western Road, and again, myself, Emery Walters, director, fifty-nine twenty-four Springfield Road.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'm just trying to understand. So you're saying thirty-four single family residences would generate more?
Was planned. It was planned there, yeah. Would generate more revenue?
There's thirty-some, approximately thirty-some that were planned to go in there. Were planned.
So thirty-four, uh, single family residents, I mean, just hypothetically, and then on the table, there's a seventy-two unit apartment complex, is that?
Correct.
Right.
And so you you're you're thinking that that apartment complex would generate less revenue?
That's my opinion.
Yeah, I just wondered what the methodology was. I priced real estate, so I'm just trying to put numbers together.
Because all of those residents, you know, I mean, they don't own homes. They don't own.
But my biggest thing is the revenue per vehicle driven on road. You take a seventy-two unit apartment complex, you just put a hundred and forty vehicles on the road in the neighborhood over the thirty-four unit.
Right.
Are we going to get enough revenue in return for the traffic that's being added to the road?
Well, typically, the amount allocated for the road district is based on the percentage of the assessed valuation.
Correct.
And so the assessed valuation of a seventy-two unit apartment complex may be equal to the assessed valuation of the thirty-four homes.
Correct. But doesn't outweigh the number of vehicles traveled on road?
Well, I I understand. I'm just.
And it's also a safety issue, too.
Yeah, I understand.
Because as of right now, you're putting it, you're planning on putting a seventy-two unit apartment complex with an entire neighborhood to drive through to exit out on the Longview. There is no easy access for this.
I understand. I was just addressing the financial aspect of it.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
How many members on the road district?
Five.
On the board?
On the board, five.
Okay, but I'm saying how many members, total members?
I believe we're at a hundred and ten homes, a hundred and fourteen right now.
Okay.
Might be a little more. They're building very fast out there.
About a hundred and a quarter and they're still going.
Have you ever taken a made a list? I'm on a road district, too. Have you made a list of what the total valuations of all the hundred and ten properties or fourteen properties are?
Correct. I receive those every year, yep.
Okay. And you're you're aware you save, I think it's one point oh nine five last year, is what you all saved in tax savings by being a road district?
Not necessarily saved. Either the money comes to us or the money goes to the county. We don't actually save.
Well, no, you do your own levy, don't you?
Correct. It comes to ourselves. If we aren't part of the road district, the money would still go to the county. Nobody saves any money.
Yes, they do on their taxes. They unincorporated road tax is not applied to your properties at the rate of one point zero nine five per thousand.
Okay.
You do not pay unincorporated road tax.
Okay.
You get that. So there is some savings to be in the road district. That's what that's why you're allowed to levy, besides the fact you're certainly a separate government unit. But the the county, our county takes off the unincorporated road tax, Pennington does. I assume road districts can be handled differently in different counties. Is that correct, Ron? Is that correct? Different counties can decide how they want to handle the road districts, but ours does take off the unincorporated road tax.
It's my understanding.
Yes. That's what I understand.
Think it would be state law.
Yeah, I didn't know, but isn't it kind of flexible on state law, how it's structured after that?
Not as far as the taxes. I mean, you're either paying road district taxes or.
Yeah, yeah. If you're saying the road district isn't collecting any taxes, then of course, yeah, the members of the road district aren't paying anything in.
No, I'm saying, if you have a mill levy, that's what I'm saying. When you become a road district, right now, I believe last year's amount was one point zero nine five per thousand is not taxed to you as property owners.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, I know, yep.
I just wanted to make that clear. There is some, you have some basis of the dollar, you probably spend more than that and you weren't getting anything for your dollar ninety-five or whatever in the first place.
Correct, yeah, you aren't getting no snow removal.
The commissioners don't want to take on the maintenance anymore roads. I'm not trying to go any farther with it. I realize that, but you you don't get taxed that in your individual property owner.
Right.
Thank you.
We tax levy, yep.
Further questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, but the biggest concern, like I'm saying, is right now they're planning to go south to the highway to be able to give these people access south and not through our neighborhood. And every land, all the land in that area, fourteen, is also owned, is going to be developed to the highway. But right now, we do not know if that's going to be part of us or not and you're conjoining the two neighborhoods with streets. Now, how do you keep people from driving through one way or the other when we are two different road districts or not or anything like that?
Yeah, road access is important.
Further questions? Thank you for your comments. The next speaker request form I have is for Art Junkle.
I apologize again, Chairman, for.
No problem.
Out that incorrectly. Sometimes I forget the convenance. I have these around my neck. Well, you know, the tax issue as far as the roads can be a double edged sword and I understand there can be savings and there may not, but how, you know, an apartment building's going to be assessed is going to, nobody's going to really know that until a couple of years down the road. So I I'm going by personal opinion, personal experiences, excuse me, that in the past, you know, I've lived in places like Scottsdale, Arizona, I've lived south of Denver, in Englewood, in very fast growing communities, and I've seen where they've changed these designations from, you know, what we're calling here is the urban and suburban residential districts. And and I can understand where they do this to to get things to progress and make it go easier, but I've been involved with these situations where in in every case, I've been in this situation and close to where this was being done. For one, the traffic changed immensely. Down the road, the taxes changed immensely. And that not only that, but you know, in in a in a smaller area like this where everybody has gone in and bought these new homes over the last ten, twelve years, you know, we're going into an, you know, a residential suburban area where people want to feel like they're away from the city. And, you know, when you go into that situation, then you start doing multi housing. My biggest concern from past experience has been, you know, the crime rate that changed in that specific area as well. And you can look at FBI statistics and it'll show that areas like that, it does change. And then over the years, the deterioration of that that particular area changes much quicker at an accelerated rate. So those are my concerns. I I do not support, you know, this this change for the rezone at all because of the way this area is set up out there and just, you know, being able to out to live out there and have my grandkids come and visit and all the other kids that are around in this neighborhood, you know, there's there's safety issues, too, you know, and I and it it's nice being out in this area where it feels rural and, you know, you got a sense of community out there. And I think once apartment buildings start going up in the same property, I think that'll change the entire aspect of the whole neighborhood, you know, for everybody. And and, you know, we might not might not see this, you know, as far as the near term, but within a few years down the road, I I just can't see where it's not going to change and sometimes on a drastic level. So that's all I have.
Thank you for your comments. Questions for Mr. Junkle? Thank you, sir. Next speaker request form is Dan Anderson.
Thank you, Commissioner, for letting me speak. My name is Dan Anderson. I work, live at thirty-six fifty Knuckle Duster Road. I'm kind of a unique landowner to this area. I'm not part of the residential Murphy Ranch District, but I own a larger tract of land that's kind of islanded out in this area. I own two acres where most people own a smaller section of land. If it's just how it changed hands, I kind of got a bigger piece of land in that area. I guess I'm really, I'm not too, I'm not sure what the planning is for the multifamily housing area where they're wanting to put an apartment complex. I'm guessing where it's circled up there, if that's if I'm like here, if that's correct.
Yes.
Okay. My piece of property is this little section right here, but there is another section right here south of me, which I'm guessing is in the same zoning, if that's correct. Am I understanding that correctly?
Those are segments that are included in the zoning request, correct?
Okay. So so to my point, going back on me, I was a, I purchased this piece of ground and my intent was to have be out of town, away from people. I border all ag land. I have a large drainage behind my my property that's that's unbuildable. So when I purchased this piece of property, I intended to probably never have this type of structure close to me. I I worked for the city as a police officer for thirteen years. It took me a long time to save up enough money to purchase this type of property. And I I expected single family homes to be developed to the south of me. That was understood, that that probably was going to be a reality and I was okay with that. As when I found out about this rezoning, I was panicked, knowing that there's a possibility that a large apartment building could be built right next to me. Single family homes have a different. Um, single-family homes have a different, uh, it's different type of privacy when it's next to you. They're a one-level or two-story apart, uh, structure where they, uh, I could block that with a fence or trees or something to provide uh privacy in my yard. When you add three or four structures, I, I'm gonna be looking, that's gonna be totally different, totally different feel. Um, in my opinion, that is a total decrease in my value of my land. Uh, the, the next owner that was to, to pre- purchase my property, uh, if there's a three-story apartment looking over my property, I, I just would see that I would have major depreciation. Um, I have four children. I know a lot of these people in the back here, that's the big, one of the biggest concerns is traffic. I don't like my kids playing in the street, but on occasion, they wander out to the street, and we, we are just gonna add so, so much more traffic to these roads. Currently, if you park two vehicles on each side of the road, it is tight. Uh, we have construction equipment coming in a lot right now, semis, uh, and you have to back up if there's two vehicles parked um, on each side of the road. Um, a lot of blind spots, um, and they're having trouble maintaining this, these roads as it is. You add more traffic to it, I just see more diff- uh, they're gonna just degrade more. Guys, the biggest thing I can talk to is I actually uh was an instructor uh for a program called Crime-Free Multi-Housing Program. Um, I did that for about five years with the Police Department in Rapid City. So I specifically taught on how to reduce crime in a multi-housing structure like this, because they are historically known for increased crime. You attract a low-income type housing that just brings things with it, and we know that. And when I purchased this property, knowing that I'm close to ag land, I'm on the outskirts of town, I guess I saw that in eighty to ninety, hundred years down the road, not five years. So I would strongly encourage you guys to understand that we give a little bit here, but who knows what's coming down the road. So we have a lot of landowners that want to retain that feel we have there, and I don't feel that this is needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? The next speaker request form is uh John Potter.
Can you have a leave, but I guess, can I speak for him or?
Yes. Nope, come on up. We're all friends here.
I'm, I'm really, really John. Thanks for uh speaking with us today and just hearing our concerns. Um, obviously, my husband works for the fire department. He was kind of in and out. Um, we have some concerns with the rezoning. As you can see, it's surrounding our whole suburban area. Um, urban development around our whole neighborhood, which is very concerning. We have uh two kids. Like we said, our kids run around with Dan, the ex-police officer's kids. Um, our, one of our concerns is, this has kind of been in hindsight to the majority of the development. It has been suburban, it's been zoned as suburban, but now, in hindsight, they think that they can put more houses in there, get more people, and I know that it's a concern right now, um, with influx of people. However, we are in the county. We kind of came in knowing that we didn't want a ton of people in our neighborhood either. We have that quaint kind of rural community. Um, so yeah, so our suburban development is being surrounded by urban development, which all of those plots could house multiplexes on them, which is fairly concerning. Like Dan said, the crime rate goes up. When you have an urban development like that, it would normally be on a thoroughfare street, right? So um, emergency vehicles can get there easily, but these are at the back of the development currently with two entrances into our neighborhood, which are already fairly busy with the amount of people that come in and out of there. Not only when you bring that many people, our school district, there's a possibility for that to be rezoned, taxes to go up, and things that we kind of, in the county, moved in there knowing that we had, but obviously, development happens, and I get that. Um, our thing is, um, we, you know, we came in knowing that those are zoned as single-family housing units, and now they're trying to rezone that to urban. Another thing that my husband wanted me to touch base on is ingress and egress of the fire and EMS through those rural areas. When you have a large development or a large complex at the back of the development, those are harder to get to for EMS vehicles. And like Dan said, if they're, our cars parked on either side of the road, the roads are narrow for those emergency vehicles to get to. Um, if you have a larger structure, um, larger structure fires, which means more vehicles through there as well. And then I would just, I'll lead to the Road District, too. Our roads are already in need of repair, and, and having, you know, a hundred and forty vehicles versus thirty vehicles or sixty vehicles, um, that doubles the increase for um road repairs.
Your name again?
Sky Potter. I have the form if you want it here.
Nope, I got it. Just wanted to write it down. Questions?
Mister Chair, the only thing I noted was that, now you realize that the, the rezon request is only for the six point six eight.
Okay, well, they said that when Dan was pointing to it, all of this was included in that rezoning, all these red, is that wrong?
I think it totaled six point six acres.
Only that portion, okay.
Right there.
Sure. So, okay, yes, that is, that's fair, yeah. So you give a little, you take a little more here, you know? But I see those red areas where, you know, Dan's adjacent to one of those properties and didn't get notification of things that progress, and that progression is natural, I get that. We just kinda wanna protect our neighborhood and our families and our kids, um, with crime rates going up through traffic. And, yeah.
I didn't think it would change what you were saying. I just wanted to make sure you only knew it was for the, the, that acreage that they're applying for.
Thanks for clarifying. Questions? No.
I don't have any further questions. Thank you. Next speaker request form, uh, Richard Benz, if you're gonna come up?
Like I said, I live at thirty-five thirty Weston Road, so I'm kind of, no, it's not on that picture. This area I moved into before most of these houses were here. As Mister Anderson said, he's a Rapid City Police Officer. I was the president of the Road District when Mister Anderson moved in. I was telling him about the taxes and stuff he can say by letting us annex them in. Didn't happen. That's okay. But we raised our kids here, okay? A lot of this, you're gonna hear from pretty much everybody here. We don't want the neighborhood to change. Yeah, and things change, and we're not against progress, but being a police officer myself, and a lot of cops have lived in this neighborhood, and why? We try to get out of the city. We get away from crime, and we know that putting an apartment complex in a nice suburban rural area just brings in a lot more crime. Yeah, we're talking about traffic in the roads, 'cause like I said, I was on the Road District before. It costs a lot of money to maintain those roads. Remington Road, one of the main accesses in there, if you're coming from Rapid City, a lot of people go down that road versus Springfield. Although Springfield's a bigger road, a lot of people don't know it. They hit Rem- Remington first. That thing's horrible. It's like the geese that was out here in the valley. 'Cause unfortunately, when this place was built, it was originally built under city zoning for some silly reason. And we don't know why, and it was a big fight, and we can't get the developer to fix that road, which should have never been built the way it was built anyway. Didn't, didn't compact correctly, so now the road's collapsing underneath it. Now it's under, unfortunately, the Road District responsibility to fix. I know it's a different topic for later on, but if the county can help us with that, that'd be fantastic. But changing this thing is the biggest topic here, is rezoning this thing to, I don't care if it's six eight, six point eight acres, I don't care if it's fifty thousand acres. That's not the point. Rezoning this thing and changing this to urban, that means that not only can this change to put apartments in, but all those other little red spots you had on the map, they can put apartments there, too. We don't want that. We want our neighborhood to stay the way it is. We want it to be out in the country. We want it to be, just like Anderson and everybody else has said, it's out in the country. It's quiet. We have no streetlights. It's nice and quiet. The crime level, yeah, we get some a little bit here and there, but not like you see, like when you put an apartment complex in there. It's gonna get bad. I'm a police officer. I've been doing police work for, geez, most of my life. And I can tell you that apartment complexes, good or bad, low income, high income, it doesn't matter. It draws the wrong crowd, and people spend a lot of money for their homes, and right now, you guys all know what the home prices are. My home, I bought it for a hundred and seventy. Now it's worth almost three. Who's gonna wanna buy that when you got an apartment complex sitting right next to it? Nobody. And then people start moving out. The crime rate starts going up. Anderson, talk, can, you can talk about, remember the broken window syndrome? If you guys ever heard of the broken window syndrome, basically, that's back, way back in the old days where somebody throws a rock through a window, then everybody else starts doing it. Kind of the same thing. Everybody moves into apartment complexes. One moves in, the next bad one moves in, the next bad one moves in. Homeowners start seeing that because the crime's going up. Homeowners get out of their places, and they start renting them. We all know what rental properties do. It's no different. And now you've got nothing more than, well, I'm a city police officer in the city of Boxer. You got Valley Village, living in right there. We don't want that. Nobody in the valley wants that. People move out of Rapid City to get out into the country. People are moving out off of Longview and building homes to get out of all that stuff. So, we're not against progress, just not that kind of progress. We don't want apartment complexes in our area. And rezoning this thing and turning it into urban from suburban gives them that opportunity to build apartment, apartment complexes?
Questions? Questions for the speaker?
Mister Chair?
Go ahead.
I guess my, my question would be the Brittany for the time being.
So no, no questions for the speaker?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'd just like to talk to staff. So Brittany, what was rationale to consider this uh rezone? I'm, I'm trying to look at what's the closest urban zoning uh to this property that you're considering trying to rezone to?
There isn't any. There's the planned unit development that had that zoning. They're proposing an eighty-four unit apartment complex on the corner within a half mile. And then there's um multi-dwelling dwellings in this area, too.
So, okay, show me.
Right here. And right along in here.
So that's, that's urban residential now?
It's, we didn't have that zoning district when this subdivision was created, so it's a planned unit development. That's Trailwood Village. So what they did, because there wasn't that urban residential district, that's the new, a new zoning district that was created as part of our view to twenty forty comprehensive plan. So in Trailwood Village, what they had done is they created a planned unit development so they could have those mixed uses within that planned unit development. So there's certain areas that are slated for multifamily. They have multifamily in that planned unit development.
So where's the closest uh multifamily apartment in comparison to?
There's one being proposed right here. There's multifamily along here, and that multifamily is here.
Proposed, that's not there. So let's not pretend it is.
Correct, but that planned unit development allows an apartment complex in that location.
Sir, let's keep comments from the, if you want to speak again, you can come up and, and address comments, but let's keep them.
So do we have a map that would show these different uh zoning, I mean, not a zoning map, but a future land use map? So it might be a little more easier to understand?
So here's the, this is the PUD that has the multifamily. This has, this is a suburban residential that has a church that's grandfathered in. This is a West River Electric Substation. There's the fire station here. These properties right here have all been rezoned to suburban residential. They're just not effective yet. Those have been approved.
Do we have a map showing that?
Not right now, 'cause those aren't effective yet.
Would be a lot easier to understand today if we did.
Right, but these ones, the, these rezones right here have been in front of the board and this commission. They're just not effective yet, so they won't be on the map until the effective date, till after the appeal period. 'Cause there's a twenty-day appeal period after the effective date, so once those are effective, which unless there's an appeal to Circuit Court, those will be effective. What isn't shown on the map yet, till it's actually effective?
So the total of those three parcels, or four parcels, is thirty-three acres roughly?
Which ones? The, all of these?
The ones that are highlighted?
Right, but it's only the seven acres that's being requested. It's a needs and bounds description for this, for this seven acres. Or six point six eight acres.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Can I pick on Brittany for a minute?
Sure.
When we have a PUD, though, in all fairness to these folks sitting out there, we discuss the PUD based upon what they're requesting. So the PUD originally had uh this, uh, these, the higher density in their request. Really?
They did, yes.
Okay, so it was discussed before a board, then the Board of Commissioners, as well as all those neighbors got to come forward. So I'm, and I can't go back and say what happened. I don't know at that PUD. I might even been on the commission at that time. I can't remember.
I don't think so. It was a while ago.
But I would like to know, I guess, and, and if it's all right with you, and, and so we're not beating a dead horse. It appears all of you are against the urban. I mean, it's that simple. And we are beating a dead horse, because if that's what you're opposed to, then that's what we need to know as a board. In other words, to make our vote. I don't need a hundred and fifty people telling me that you're opposed, or a hundred and fourteen members of the Road District, for instance.
No.
And is, and, and my question then to you is, do you think, based on the amount, number of people that oppose it, that this is the place to put a new designation urban?
We look at the surrounding land uses.
Based upon my thought about the PUD used, trying to justify it with a PUD that was a totally different horse.
Correct. And also, in, in this zoning district, mind you, if they don't rezone it, they can still come back and ask for a conditional use permit to allow a multifamily dwelling in that district.
Correct.
So there are other, it is a condition.
But I think I would consider the number of people then versus this new urban category. I'm saying I'd go through the same thing again, but...
Right. So under this PUD, if someone, when they come in for their building permit, there's no notification, there's no nothing. It's not allowed to use under that PUD in that location. So no one, when we look at when they come in to submit the building permit for that, that, there's no notification. It's just a building permit application.
I understand that, but we've got PUDs way out in the hills, too, that indicate they want uh multi, you know, we have some with multi way out in the hills. But that was all discussed when the developer, who, whether it was an individual or a company, brought all those things, and then we put a bunch of conditions on it and said what to do with it.
Right, this was in the early nineties. That, this was, early nineties.
Okay. Thank you.
You, you said the applicant was in the audience?
The applicant's agent, yes.
I, I have a question about the access to the proposed parcel. I've been um trying to figure out, uh, based off of that map, is, is the access, that's a drainage that comes through there, right, to the north?
Yes.
So... Go ahead and state your name for the record.
I'm Kelsey Hall. I'm the owner representative.
Okay.
Can we get the Murphy Ranch? So Longview is on the north side there, and then just the, this one. So what I handed out to you today is our future second access to help alleviate some of the Road District's uh request for using their roadway. So Longview's to the north here, and there are two roads, Springfield and Derringer, I believe, or Black Powder. So our piece of property is just to the west there, what we're requesting. So...
How, how will access to that property happen?
Uh, at this point, the access would be across, uh, from Springfield, from Longview, down Remington, or down, if you went down Derringer Road, then down Black Powder. The... So the access would be right here. This would get into the property.
So there's no direct access to Longview?
Not from Longview due to the box covert. There's a box covert right here, and the drainage runs just here.
So then you'll have to cross that and go into the existing?
Yep, and then the map I showed you, uh, the brown piece is our uh piece of property we're requesting the rezone for the multifamily. Then we have the south portion of the property that was purchased. That will be, the first access will be here. But our plan is to... But our plan is to have the blue portion, phase two, and that entire access from Springfield down to Highway forty-four done by the end of twenty-three. So, at this time, there is no PUD, there's no structure solidified that's going here. The largest sized unit we would put in here is seventy-two, but it could be smaller.
So, after everything you've heard today, why, why not keep the area suburban?
Um, the land with the drainage channel going in here isn't large enough to put a road and multiple units in. You'd have a one-way road in one side. Because you, when we widen, we have to widen the drainage channel and put an access easement for maintaining the drainage channel as well. And then you'd have to put in a road and then you have the residential lots. So, you'd probably get maybe six or seven. And that's not feasible to make for a road just based on those residential units that you would put in. That's the request for doing a multifamily apartment. Because you would get more tax basis and more units in for that small piece of property.
Further questions?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So, have you done a feasibility study? What, you know, what kind of, what scale would you be leaning towards? I mean, I've seen a lot of different apartments in Rapid City and I've seen really high-end apartments that, you know, was geared for seniors. And I've seen, you know, lower stuff that's just geared for anybody that can further live there. So, what are you guys aiming for?
We haven't done any of that. We're just developing this property to be, for whoever to buy that piece of property, to use it of that, what they choose to do with it. So, we're just trying to rezone it to become the apartment multifamily. We aren't developing it at this point.
So, the map that you gave us, there's five different shaded areas?
Yep.
Is that all, all under the same ownership?
It is, yep. Pink Cabin LLC, yep.
Further questions?
I just have a comment under analysis. It says, "Current zoning and future land use in the area identifies the subject property as suburban residential district, not urban residential district." So, future land use means something, I would think.
Okay, further questions? Okay, I think, thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak on this item? Do you like to speak again, sir?
Yes, please.
Please come on up.
Um, this map actually gives you a pretty good idea of the geography for this, what they're proposing. Um, I drive into this area every day. It's where I live. So, I understand timelines and what would work best. Um, what they're proposing, well, what she just explained, it doesn't matter how they get in there. They're going to have to drive everybody for those seventy-two unit apartments through residential. Because they're either going to have to come in on this north side or they're going to have to come in on forty-four on this south side and they're planning all residential streets on that south development. So, there's no good access. Why not an apartment off the highway? Not coming through residential the entire time. Um, I guess I just want to hit on too, you know, we start here. The chunk of ground just south of me is kind of odd shaped. Um, it doesn't really lend to, uh, good access. It's either large tracks or like a cul-de-sac. I was also just told that they're planning a fourplex, um, south of me. So, where does it stop? So, um, it's just, I just think that they have the resources and the ability to do this closer to a main thoroughfare where we're not putting, we're not channeling all that access to, through, uh, through neighborhoods. This chunk of land they're trying to, you know, equate it to does have access right at a, you know, major roadways where this does not. Um, you have the Murphy ditch right here that runs through here. This is all waterway and then this is all waterway here too. So, I don't know how they're addressing that. I'm guessing bridges and whatnot. But, uh, it's, they're trying to say that this won't produce enough money for them by making it smaller lots. Well, what's going to say that they're not going to do that elsewhere where it doesn't work? So, I say that I, I just, I see concerns, some concerns that this is, there's more to this. Thank you.
Further questions? You'd like to speak, sir? Come on up.
It's, you know, it, it's always vague on developer, owner, whatever. But, you know, what, I know, I understand what's driving this and it all has to do with money and the access to Ellsworth Air Force Base and the changes that are going on out there with the BEAT twenty-one program going. And they still need a lot of housing units. And I can understand why they want to take this little piece of property and put multi-use in there. And it will disrupt this entire neighborhood as far as traffic going in and out. And it must have a separate access. And the one up on the corner doesn't even compare to it. But it's just based on, you know, money. I mean, and in some cases, it's almost greed. There's no point in ruining a whole neighborhood just because of one owner, you know, if they want to make that much more profit. I mean, I think they could go somewhere else. I really do.
Had another hand up? Yes, please come on up and we'll get to you.
I've owned property, oh, my name is Annette Matt and I live on Colvin Street, which is right to the west of this property they're talking about. I've lived in that area for over forty years. When we first moved in there, we actually had a dam on the north side of Longview and a dam on the south side close to the Murphy's house. Because that whole area is a natural watershed. Two years ago, we had over a foot of rain and it all ended up in that, in that walkway there, in that runway. It took over two weeks before the rain drained off. I have problems in my property. I have two sump pumps that I have to keep working because of possibility of rain. So, I don't think it's a very good idea to try to build in that area, especially apartment buildings and no access. It, it is kind of ludicrous that they're even thinking this way of taking our urban, taking our suburban feel, our living in the country to put up apartment buildings to block our view. I lived there before any of the houses were built on the east. And we had just alfalfa land. So, I can see building for the future. But to put an apartment building right in the middle of residential just doesn't make any sense. And, and that's all I have to say.
Questions for the speaker?
Chair, I, we talked earlier about seventy-two apartments. Well, this would just be, nothing directed for you, ma'am. Just, I was going to make a, I'm trying to grasp, we've got some disparity between, uh, I heard some testimony saying they think thirty-four homes could be built on that. Then I've heard seventy-two apartment units. And we, I think we all agree that a road district, that their funding comes from the assessed value. So, if you take seventy-two apartment buildings and I'm relatively sure those units are going to be about a hundred and fifty thousand a piece. That's ten million eight hundred thousand. If you take thirty-four homes, at three hundred thousand a piece, that's ten million two hundred. So, we're equal. But, uh, I also heard testimony that there's only seven possible home sites in there. And I would like to see some documentation that can support that number.
Well, you know, I realize that, that developers are looking to make money. But to put an apartment building right in the middle of a residential area where it will block the people that live on the west side of that, it will block the rising sun, people that live on the east side, it'll block the, the, oh, sun going down. It, it just, it just takes away from the beauty of living in Rapid Valley. And, and I know they were talking about putting those apartment buildings across to the northwest of us. The, the worst thing I heard on that one was the developer was trying to fill in that natural lake over there. That, that's another watershed. And if you start changing the underground water flow, it's going to affect basements. It's going to affect roadways. I, I just think we have to look more seriously at what is happening as far as the drainage and, and as far as, what, why do we have that drainage ditch going down there? Several year, twenty years ago, we had water that nobody could understand where it was coming from. And that was the reason for the drainage ditch. Trying to keep us that had lower, how, that had houses that had walkout basements, trying to keep the S from getting flooded. So, you change the water, you, you change the underground water flow and it affects people that already built their houses.
And I totally understand. I think those are questions that you need to talk to or finding a zoning department. Because if they made the recommendation to go urban, then this should have been vetted out and we should have answers to your questions. So, uh, thank you, ma'am.
Can I answer that? We're going to improve that drainage ditch, widen it and make it deeper. So, we'll improve that drainage ditch and how it?
Okay, I got to ask you a question. If you put any landfill in there, because of where I live on the west side of that piece of property, I'm right at the bottom there. And I have seen water come back into my yard already just from rain, not from drainage ditch problems. That drainage ditch didn't solve our problem when they built it. We, it, it actually turned out that Rapid Valley had a, a water main leak. And that's what caused our major problems to the west of us. But in the meantime, when they took the dam out on the north side of Longview, which at that time belonged to Ferguson's, the more water ran under Longview. And, and that, that field, every place else will be brown. That field will still be green because of the water level under the ground. That's what we have to look at.
Thank you.
And hopefully, that's been done.
Any other folks want to speak on this? Please come up, sir.
Just a couple little things. They're talking about, you know, you can only put some apartments right there and some housing, maybe seven through here. If you take a look at those lots, those are actually fairly large lots. Mine's right there on the corner, right there. That's, that's a quarter of an acre. Some of these houses over here, they're small houses, like little, I guess you can call them governor's houses or something like that. And they're saying you can only put maybe seven in here. Take a look at that lot and where that street's at. Put that in configuration with all of that. And how many of those houses can you build in there? Those are still single family. She's saying seven. She's full of it. There's no, you can build a lot in there. Same thing coming down this way, same thing back up through here. You can put a lot of houses. These houses they're putting in here are really large houses. So, you can't look at these little squares and go, "Wait, hey, you can't put too many in here." And then when they talked about, I lost it. This little section that they're building right here next to this lake, that's a natural spring. Any of you guys want to take a look at that spring? It looks like complete mess around it right now because whoever's doing that work in there, it's a mess. People go from all over Rapid City to come to this little thing right there and fish into there. At one point, they were stocking trout and stuff in there. Um, and right now it's horrible because they're trying to develop this thing and I don't know what they're going to do with it, but there's a natural spring right there. So, think about, think about the land, what's going to happen to it? And think about all of us that have got to live out there and what's going to happen to us. You know, Mr. Anderson says, you know, "Why don't they put it down here along the easier access, the interstate or the Highway forty-four?" Yeah, why don't they? But keep it away from our neighborhood. Keep it away, keep all that traffic out. Keep the crime, um, help us out. All I got to say.
Thank you for your comments. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Jim.
I'd like to have the representative from the developer tell us why the only way to do this is through that residential street, Springfield.
So, this is the current drainage channel. There's a box covert right here. This is an entire drainage channel that runs through this. That's the entire drainage channel that's already there. So, the only access to this piece of property, because this lot right here is the original homestead for the Murphy brothers. So, the only access to this piece of property is through this street.
So, you're going to funnel all the traffic down that Springfield or whatever it is?
Yep.
Yeah, I drove that street yesterday and it's, uh, it doesn't lend itself to that kind of traffic, I don't think.
It's just this unit will be there. But as I gave you with your, the handout, the future is to bring this street along this drainage channel, cross it again with another box covert and have an access right down here. So, at this time for us-
Don't want to do that now.
Not right now. Not at the moment.
Why not?
Why not? Because this piece of property is way up north.
So, it would increase your cost dramatically if you tried to do that.
Correct.
Okay. I guess I, I understand your motivation and situation. Okay.
Any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the only thing I'd like to, it's tough, you know, I've got a lot of people in the audience and, you know, I'm pro-development. But I'd really like to see more documentation that would, that would give me a little more confidence that only seven lots can be built on that six acres. Because if you divide six by seven, that's point eight five acre, point eight five acre piece if they were partitioned equally. And I'm just trying to grasp. We got thirty-four on this end and seven here. I'd like to see some documentation that can support that seven, that statement.
Sure.
So, I would ask for continuance.
Okay. Further questions?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
I guess I couldn't support your continuance around, the only reason being, I, I don't know how many of these meetings I've ever attended, but I can't remember ever having ten percent of any group sitting out here and represented through letters and comments from the audience. They're not just the audience. They live there. And ten percent is a lot to show up at our meeting. I've been here and ten percent just doesn't happen. And we've got more than ten percent represented in our, our records. I'm the other way around. We, there was an earlier statement by a gentleman on the left that pointed at Mr. Coleman, that we have a responsibility to look at things. I'm not sure this is the, the first request for urban. I'm not sure it belongs here. There are properties that can't be developed. There are properties that financially don't make the goals of the owners for development. And that's what we're talking about, the road, the access to keep it off of the road district. That's because of dollars and cents. And I don't blame the owners of the property for that. They've got to pursue it the way they can afford it. Because they want to get it done, but they're going to move to other areas. The same owner owns the remaining areas. So, no, I, I, I just, I can't support continuing when you've got ten percent of those people here. What happens if it goes down the road some? Maybe we're not happy with the justification she gives us. And then we continue it again. And these folks get beat up. So, I, I, I'm not going to support that. I think we got it decided today.
And I'd like to make a motion, please, and that would be to deny the- And I'd like to make the motion please, and that would be to deny the request.
Second.
Motion in second to deny rezone RZ 21-26. Is there further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead Jim.
I just want to make a comment relative to the motion. You know, uh, last week there was an article in Rapid City Journal, rather lengthy one, which was of course a rarity. Um, and about this new battery factory that's coming to town in the next year or so. And on Saturday, there was another lengthy article, another rarity for the Journal, in which they spoke at some length about the shortage of housing, particularly multifamily housing in Rapid City. They're short 3,500 units. And of course, I'm struck by the fact that that battery factory's future is dependent upon employees. Employees have to have places to live. And people who work in battery factories, at least in many of them, probably are at, uh, entry level type jobs. They can't afford to live where you guys do. We've got to have places for them. It's part of our economic future. It's part of my job, your job. They all depend on a vigorous economy. And sadly, if everyone, and we all have good legitimate compelling and undeniable reasons for saying, let somebody else do it. I would say this, in this particular instance, this is a small section of your residential area in. And let me remind you that residential is also multifamily. We're not gonna put a steel plant in there. This is residential housing. And I know there's a distinction. And many of you are insecure about the fact because it's, it is apartments and so forth, and it's multifamily. What little I've read about this though, is that multifamily dwellings are far better if they're in areas that are near or a part of single family areas. I.e. what happens is you people become the standard by which the behavior is determined, often times by people who live in those apartments. Now, I'm don't, I'm not naive enough to think that, uh, you know, that that's gonna happen in every case. But the notion that a couple of people have pointed out at this, that apartments are ridden with crime, I, I simply think is unfair and probably fundamentally untrue. Now, I, we, we have to be able to somehow accommodate these people. And I hate to see it done on your back. That's not the point. But I do think it's not nearly as dark as you painted it. It's a small segment of your area. There's going to be additional development, which will be multifamily, but it's not gonna be residential towers. Uh, I, I, I just think this is something that, um, needs to be done for the future of the community. And it's hard to say that you have to be the one who pulls the wagon, but we all at some point are gonna have to face decisions like that. And so I'm gonna vote in, 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 uh, against the denial of this. Because I, I think fundamentally, it must come eventually. And, um, and for, for the reasons that I've outlined. So, but I am disturbed about the, the access. And that's why I was hoping, once the other development takes place, then that other road gets through, then you guys are relieved and that thing's gonna move more to highway 40. So you're not, because I did drive down to Springfield and there were, I thought, Jesus, this is not a very good deal for a, for an ex, you know, an access area. But I think it will be a temporary thing. So that's my thinking. And I appreciate all of you coming. This was an impressive turnout, Commissioner Johnson. Thank you.
Further discussion? Okay. Uh, noting no further discussion, um, all those in favor of the denial signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed to the denial say nope.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
So that's two. We have one, two, three, four, two. Motion carries. We're on item 15.
Boy, they empty the house.
Item 15 is ordinance amendment OA 21-17, Pennington County, to amend section 324B 5A accessory dwellings, to amend and supersede the existing section 324B 5A accessory dwellings. Uh, this reason for this change is to update the section to be consistent with section 309. Um, under that section, it says an accessory dwelling unit cannot be placed in a front yard. And then we just added of a lot consisting of less than one acre. So staff is recommending approval of ordinance amendment OA 21-17.
So as I understand it, the, um, just the text in red was the text that got added, correct?
Correct. I move approval.
Second.
Motion in second for approval of ordinance amendment 21-17. Further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Brittany, what? An accessory dwelling cannot be yet rented more than 180 days a year?
Yes, it can be a long-term rental.
It's what?
It is a long-term rental. It can be a long-term rental largest.
So that could be, you would have your primary residence and then an accessory dwelling.
Correct.
And that would be a situation that that might come in, uh, would be where you have a family member that needs a place to stay for a while or something like that. But that's different than a guest house.
Correct. That's different than the guest house and it's different than a vacation home rental. An accessory dwelling unit cannot be a vacation home rental.
Further questions? Further discussion? Noting none, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 16, but I would note in the staff report that it says agenda items, uh, VW, X, Y, Z, that kind of thing. So-
16, 17, 18, 19. So item 16 is ordinance amendment OA 21-13, for Pennington County to add section 325 marijuana ordinance definition of terms to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Uh, this was heard at the September 13th Planning Commission meeting. Uh, those recommended changes were made. Um, you can see that they're in bold and underlined or struck out, um, as part of the recommendations from the Planning Commission at that meeting.
Questions for staff on this one? Before I go to speaker request forms?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the, the part, the definition of marijuana cannabis, it was all struck out. And so we're just referring to what the state statute says.
Correct.
Instead of our interpretation.
Well, if it ever changes in statute, it'll be the same. So it'll be whatever the statute defines it as.
Okay.
I, I like the idea of us not having different definitions than what's defined by higher courts.
Absolutely. Less is better.
Further discussion?
To approve.
Um, I do have a speaker request. Let's, maybe we go through that first and then-
Apologize Chair. Thank you.
Um, Kitrick Jeffy, Jeffries. And I see that you're, uh, you have this listed four times.
Yeah, for the next four. They're all regarding marijuana.
Got it.
So Mr. Chair, my name's Kit Jeffries. I represent Dakota Cannabis Consulting. I live at 1732 Mesa Drive, Rapid City, South Dakota. Um, and just to touch on this ordinance, I first wanted to thank Brittany and the State Attorney's Office and everybody for their hard work on drafting these ordinances. I know that this is, uh, building a foundation from the ground up. It's not easy. There's a lot of long hours behind the scenes work that goes into it. And so I just wanted to say thank you, um, to them and their teams. Um, and I couldn't agree more with you, uh, Commissioner, on, uh, making sure that all of the required language within ordinance follow state statute. And one of the things I just wanted to comment on, um, following the next several ordinances, is that there's a lot of, uh, repetition between, um, administrative rule and codified law within the ordinance. It may be a lot easier on the eyes and a lot easier to understand if it were just very similarly how the, um, section eight of this was referred to and defined in South Dakota Codified Law 2242-1-7. Um, and the reason why is, um, essentially establishing an extra layer of bureaucracy that may not need to be in place. So that as long as administrative rule or codified law is changed, we don't have to come back in here and change it every single step of the way. There are a lot of redundancies within the remaining ordinances, um, a lot of repetition, um, in the following ordinances. And so I just wanted to point that out. Other than that, I'd support it. So thank you.
Thank you. Further, further questions? Does anybody else wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends, uh, approval of ordinance amendment 21-13 with the changes as noted in the packet. Is there a motion?
Who to approve per staff recommendation?
The second.
Motion in second for approval. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 17 or agenda item W in the packet. Ordinance amendment 21-14.
Ordinance amendment 21-14, Pennington County to add section 326 marijuana businesses to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Uh, to add this section to the Pennington County zoning ordinance to establish conditional use permit requirements for marijuana businesses operating in Pennington County. Uh, there was a couple, um, updates, um, that the Planning Commission had suggested. Um, there were also some updates, um, as to the procedure. Um, and that's in section D on page seven of 10. Um, there was the requirement that the CUP was going to have to go to the Board of Commissioners. Uh, but with the shortened timeframe that the state has required in that 90 days, um, that they have to apply for a license with the state in order for applicants to, to meet our timeline and the state timeline, um, we removed that requirement. Um, a conditional use permit is a land use issue and that is something that's hurt by this Planning Commission anyway. Um, they will have a hearing in front of the Board of Commissioners for their licensing hearing and have to submit all of the information that is part of the CUP. So that was one item that was removed to essentially shorten the process.
Questions for staff on this?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So we're talking section 326?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, I see some statement here, industrial zoning. So would that apply to light industrial and heavy industrial?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. And I see Rapid City's position is 500 feet from a residential and I ask for ours to consider 250?
Yes.
And I think when it's all said and done, we're gonna probably want more than 250 even.
So we did look into that, um, as you requested. Most of our zone, industrial zoning districts are not even close to, um, residential districts. Um, I think it would be difficult however, if you did highway service or commercial districts, to create that larger buffer. Um, the only reason I say that is because if you look at a lot of the areas along highway 44, highway 16, those commercial and highway service districts are residential districts about those. So I think you could get into situations, um, where it would be difficult to establish, um, those dispensaries there. Uh, the other concern would be that where we don't have a lot of highway service and commercial zoning districts. So we don't want to zone out the ability to have them either.
So we're, I guess what you're saying is that we're, it's a different playing field from the city to the county.
It is. Um, I would recommend that if you would want to increase that, um, distance, um, that you do it, um, for the cultivation or the manufacturing facilities. Just separate them out. Um-
Well, if there's some rationale to support it, I guess I'm, you know, I don't have a problem with it.
I mean, I, I don't see that the 250 feet would be that much of an issue in most cases.
Thank you.
Currently you have it listed as 100 feet.
Correct. And during the discussions at the previous Planning Commission meeting, um, the Commissioner Ross Connect wanted us to look at if we increased it, if it would create a situation where we would basically zone out the ability to have those uses in those areas.
You're saying just for the two, for the, the manufacturing and for the cultivation, it, it would, you wouldn't see any issues with that, but the dispensary may be restrictive?
If, if you get too much over that 250, I think you would, you would struggle with meeting some of those zoning districts. It'd be difficult in the current zonings that are in place right now to get some of those facilities in. So we have to kind of balance that where we're not zoning it out, their ability to-
I guess it'd be safe to say that, uh, once everything's implemented and we got, we start having problems, that we can always amend that to something.
You could, but if those businesses were established ahead of time, then you, it would be-
So it is something that we still have some control over.
If you wanted to consider that 250, now would be the time to make that change.
Is there a restriction on a, we had this conversation two weeks ago, um, a liquor store, that kind of thing? What is the restriction on the liquor store with respect to these items, residentially zoned, youth centers, public swimming pool, that kind of thing?
We do not, in our zoning ordinance, the only one that has a restriction are adult oriented businesses have specific setback requirements. Um, liquor stores do not. They would just be considered a retail establishment and in a commercial or highway service district.
Okay. Further questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Charlie.
I'm, I'm glad that you've moved it to where it's more conventional, how the conditional use permits are being handled versus, it, the other one looked cumbersome to me because it's separating one thing from the rest of the conditional use permits. So, and I express that to you. I think that's important to a nice, flexible, easy moving process that we, we follow. We don't earmark something like, that this is so special, it has to be reviewed by two bodies. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
One more, Brittany, the required notice, as I see, struck out the Board of Commission hearing notice.
Yes.
That the Board of Commissioners shall hold at least one public, that's, that was struck out. So I'm just trying to get an understanding on that.
Right, so the conditional use permit will only go to the Planning Commission and approved by the Planning Commission because the Board of Commissioners will still have the licensing hearing and the, the Board of Commissioners will still be the final say. Uh, so the conditional use permit will be more of a land use review that this board is typical of doing for all of the conditional use permits. Then there will be a development plan review where staff, um, members of, you know, different departments will look at the actual building plans and then it'll go to the licensing hearing where the board will be able to consider the conditional, the information that was submitted as part of the conditional use permit in determining whether the license will be approved.
Okay.
Further questions for staff? Mr. Jeffries, do you want to speak on this item?
Yeah, we wish.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Uh, Kit Jeffries with Dakota Cannabis Consulting, I represent, or I live at 1732 Mesa Drive, Rapid City, South Dakota. And Mr. Chair, do I have to repeat that every time I come up?
Uh, just your name.
Okay, thank you. Um, just going through, I just had a couple of questions, comments, concerns, um, as we go through this ordinance. Um, I'll allow the time to get there, but on page one, um, one of the things with, uh, same section, sub A, sub four, sub B and C. Um, and so right where we were talking about marijuana cultivations are allowed within conditional use permit in general, commercial and industrial zoning districts. Um, my question for the cultivation side of it, why would a plant that you can grow, farm, uh, not be allowed in agriculturally zoned districts? Um, as per, um, a previous speaker, um, Commissioner Coleman, um, touched on allowing the music festival out in agricultural land. Um, and it may not bother some ranchers. Uh, so that's just one of those pieces I'd like to bring up. Uh, we, we had an outdoor cult, or I owned an outdoor medical marijuana cultivation farm in Oregon. Um, outdoor medical marijuana is permitted per law and per ARSD. Um, or, I'm sorry, administrative rule. Um, and that will bring me up later when we talk about that. Um, so a piece on that is your, rule allows you to have cultivation outdoors with, uh, certain fence requirements, security requirements, gates, locks, things like that. Um, so just part of that is in allowing these cultivation facilities to be zoned within agriculture, agricultural districts would be a recommendation I'd ask. Um, and then same with manufacturers as well. Um, there's a lot of rural agricultural land. There's two different types of extraction labs, um, set out in ARSD. One is considered generally safe. One is considered potentially hazardous, potentially hazardous as you- Potentially hazardous, as you know, you're using closed-loop extraction with solvents such as propane, butane, things like that. And that's part of the reason why the recommendation was to allow that in industrial zoning districts is to keep it away from the general population in case of an accident, and I like that, planning ahead and thinking ahead, just for public safety. And so the same piece with that as well. It also helps with public safety if you do permit cultivation sites to be in agricultural zoning to allow manufacturers to be there as well, less distance to transport if somebody wanted to open up a cultivation facility and a manufacturing facility on the same lot or tax lot. So there would be no need to transport it long distances and have that threat as well. Going down to page two, and forgive me for being naive on the, just county ordinance as well, so one of the pieces was that no marijuana business shall be located in a movable or mobile structure. And it brought me the same deal with that music festival. One of the things was that they would need a permit depending on the size of the structure that they were going to be building, and the question came back to what size greenhouse that would be required, and if that greenhouse was movable within that tax lot, if that would be allowed or not. So I just wanted to bring that up. Page three, down towards the middle in B1, D4, this is more of a general statement, just a recommendation and a question. So stakeholders are going to be required for, to have a plan for the management of marijuana waste generated from the facility as required by law and, or statute and by rule. That's a plan. So the question, I guess, for the county is what the county's plan is for the waste? Is it going to be going to the landfill? Is there, are there going to be a certain section designated for compost at the landfill? I'd just like to open up your eyes to that. Continuing on, 326 to page six, down to the very bottom, and C cultivation facility. This is where we talk about outdoor cultivation is prohibited. I think that's an unreasonably restrictive rule. It is allowed by statute, specifically 3420G, section 75, sub five, sub E, and administrative rule 44900506. And as long as you have adequate fences, gates, security systems, alarms, et cetera, you're allowed to produce in an outdoor environment. And in order to reduce the black market, we need to have the availability for our farmers to cultivate outdoors, and I agree with Governor Noem's position in allowing the most patient-focused program possible. And I think that possible starts with eliminating that prohibition on outdoor cultivation.
Could I just speak briefly to the legality of why we have included that in our ordinance? Megan Krueger for the State's Attorney's Office. Actually, the statute does not require that this be allowed. In fact, the only requirement that counties and municipalities must follow is that they allow one dispensary. There are several counties and municipalities that are not allowing cultivation at all. And having spoken specifically with the Department of Health's attorney in their interpretation of their regulations, they indicate that at the planning level, it is up to the counties and municipalities to decide what they are going to allow in their counties. So I would dispute that claim that Mr...
I would actually agree with that. That's actually right, and I actually apologize for misspeaking on that.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, sorry, let me get back to my tab.
You were on page six.
Yep, and then I go into the 327, so that's everything I have for that one. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Questions? I think that some of those items were discussed two weeks ago, so I don't know if we necessarily need to hammer through those, but it had a lot to do with staff size, availability, area to cover, et cetera, et cetera, that were the reasons for the way that the current ordinance is being proposed.
And I would just like to piggyback on that a little bit. In the facilities and the chores that we did in Colorado and that we looked at, from a planning perspective, none of those type of operations we would consider an agricultural operation. They're mostly in warehouses that use high amounts of water, high amounts of electricity. They're more appropriate in industrial and commercial zoning districts.
Additional questions? Go ahead, sir.
Hi, Tony Harrison. I work with the Sheriff's Office. I'm a captain there, and I just wanted to talk, I'd ask for a talk real quickly about some of the safety, security issues with outdoor grows specifically, and issues that we would have as a sheriff's office and as law enforcement in general. And, and while I appreciate the fact that the statute and the, and the current rules that are pending talk about secured lock facilities and structures, and that if there are all these locked structures and locked facilities and outdoor marijuana grow, it's going to be safe and sound, I will tell you, our county pays and funds for a juvenile services center, and we have had kids get out of juvenile service center with nothing more than a pair of wire cutters. That is a fenced, secure facility, as secure as there is besides our jail, and so if we know people can come out of the juvenile service center, I suspect people can get into a marijuana grow wherever that may be out in the county. So obviously, that's an issue for us. You cannot secure without a cement concrete wall, and if a closed facility, I suppose you could that way, but even then it could be penetrated, but obviously this day fence is not going to do it. Window or gates, security guards, et cetera, do they help? Yeah, they do help. I would tell you, every single day we deal with theft reports all across the county, and if this place, this grows in an area so far away from homesteads, it's out in the openness, there's obviously ability for people to get in and out without being detected. If it's closer to a populated area, then we have the issues with smells, concerns, and stuff like that. I've been to Colorado, I've been to many different grows. I know there is mitigation requirements for indoor grows, but for outdoor grows, you can't mitigate that, it's called the wind. And you've all been on the other side of the argument where the lighting company is putting the new towers and everything else, and people are going to hear the hum of the, everything else, well, it's not going to be the sound, it's going to be the odors I'm going to have to dealing with, and we're going to get those calls, and with the calls, they're going to get the calls, and those are things I think when you be aware of. The other thing that is not really necessarily a law enforcement issue, but certainly something to think about would be, because we do get called for this, chemicals, runoffs, overspraying, stuff like that, those are the issues that we're, we get called for everything, I'm not lying. We got a call one time because someone was barbecuing, and the smell of the barbecue is going to someone else's house. That is a barbecue. We got called because of that. You can only imagine what this will generate. So those are some of the things I wanted you to think about. You know, when I was in Colorado interviewing folks about some of the pitfalls of marijuana that don't always get mentioned, I talked to a gentleman who was physically moving his deck from the back of his house to the side of his house, because his neighbors were actively growing pot and smoking it outside, even though it's against the rules to grow it outside, they were doing it, and the odor, he was moving his deck. And that's a pretty powerful statement when you think about it. So those are some of the issues that us along for. The security is obviously a big deal, and those are things that we just want to mention as a thing to think about.
Thank you for your comments, questions?
My question would be the staff, just if you were relative to cultivation, would an acre be enough, or half acre, or just, or 100 acres? What are we talking here? So like, and we can get all on the same page?
The facilities that we were in in Colorado, there was one that was an extremely large facility that had, what, 141,000 plants? Was on a, probably an average point one five type acre lot in an industrial area. It was in a warehouse-type building.
So relative to the egg zoning, if someone wanted to apply and they had land that was zoned egg, could they not try to rezone that to some kind of an industrial and then apply for conditional use permit?
They could, and that, this board and the Board of Commissioners would have to look to see if that industrial zoning is appropriate in that area, just as you have on most of your reasons.
Right, I'm just looking at alternatives.
For the questions, comments?
Just a comment. I think until we have the ability for our law enforcement to be able to quickly and easily decipher the difference between industrial hemp and the marijuana business, I don't think that we should be looking at outdoor. We're putting a burden onto the, the officers involved. I think it's going to have to be something that's fairly restrictive at this point in time. Industrial hemp is a totally different product, but it's very, very difficult for them to be able to decipher one from the other. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more speaker here coming up. Sir, please state your name for the record.
Timothy McMahon, M&amp;M Medical Solutions here in Rapid City, South Dakota, 4832 Mountain Springs Court. My question is to you folks, did you realize how long it takes after this is proposed to get things rolling? I mean, there's a lot of patients out there that need this medical marijuana, and it takes probably, after, if we get the licensing, it's going to take a good six to eight months to get this thing going. My question is, do you realize the fact that the longer the time that takes to get things rolling, more patients are going to be without marijuana?
Mr. Chair.
I wouldn't mind answering that. I, I agree, but it appears the state of South Dakota has decided to drop that part in our lap. It's been drug out as far as it can after a great number of voters sent it through, and it's unfortunate, but I don't think Pennington County can do anything to speed it up other than get this in place, so it's there January 1st as appropriate and get things going. But I, I somewhat agree with you, it had other people to do than people in Pennington County.
Oh, yeah. Another question I have to ask you folks is, why would, why would you not commit an agricultural place to have this facility?
For the reasons that were, that were brought up and already addressed?
Well, the reasons was because of the, I guess, the part where, where you've got your, you've got your facility, and it's got so much byproduct coming out of it, and they don't want to release it into the ground, is that the problem for agricultural?
There's been several, there's been several discussions with regards to the safety. You just heard the sheriff discuss various scenarios and the security of such facilities.
Well, we're proposing a 6,000 square foot facility that's all contained inside.
Okay.
So we've got natural springs and stuff on our property. Property's located next to Hart Ranch, and right now it's proposed as agricultural. We have to have that changed to get this facility out there then, or is that the...
You're requesting, in other words, the zoning agriculture, not so much just a view of agriculture. You're saying the zoning agriculture because it isn't included in the ordinance at this time? I can see what you're saying, but it isn't included at this time.
No, it's not, I mean...
And that hasn't been discussed, no. I haven't heard any, other than, I think, Brittany, you briefly spoke about the agriculture, why that zoning district wasn't included, very briefly. Just go ahead for Mr. McMahon, I forgot myself, otherwise I'd do it for you.
Sure, we just look at the type of facilities that they are, and when we look at them from a planning perspective, the type, the amount of electricity, the amount of water, the type of operation, it is not, in our opinion, from a planning perspective, an agricultural operation. And in addition to, and, you know, speaking with the sheriff's office, just the logistics and the, and the locations of those types of facilities.
Did we answer your question, sir?
I think so.
All right. Further questions on ordinance amendment 21-14? If not, staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment 21-14. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Motion in second for approval of ordinance amendment 21-14, further discussion.
And that includes the recommended changes that are proposed in here with removing the hearing in front of the Board of Commissioners?
As written.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes, as revised for this meeting.
And is the second, agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, we're on item 18.
Item 18 is ordinance amendment OA 21-15 for Pennington County to add section 327 marijuana business development plan to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. The purpose of this is to add this section to establish development plan standards for dispensaries, cultivation facilities, manufacturing and testing facilities. Under this section, there was a few just grammatical changes, and then there was one major change on page four. Due to the state's short timeline, we did add an actual deadline in there, so staff has some ability to move these things through more quickly, so we can meet those timelines.
My question is, is the last part of that, it says "or for good cause." What is good cause?
It's a legal term that is used actually under the licensing requirements, but...
And then "as determined by who?"
Let me see that again, sorry.
It says, "The planning department must render a decision on the development plan within 10 days of its submission unless the delay is due to a failure by the applicant to meet the requirements of the section, a request by the applicant for additional time, or for good cause."
Yeah, so typically, good cause is there's a really significant reason or a mess-up at the county level. That's typically how it's interpreted, is that it was an issue that was created by the county or its employees, or for whatever reason, somebody was told the incorrect information. It's not typically for an applicant whoops for getting to do a major step, if that makes sense, which we can always take that...
The submittal has to be complete.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think that answered my question. Thank you.
Sure. I would see it too as if staff asked for specific information as part of this review, and it wasn't delivered or produced.
Then the timeframe starts over, does it not?
Correct.
Go ahead, Charlie, you had a question?
I thought, and I can't find it, most of these things in 21-15 really relate to a lot of the licensing part of the submittal, don't they?
It does, it has to do with the actual structure itself and the building.
Right.
And that'll be submitted as part of the licensing for review by the board.
But we will be looking or reviewing some of these items as well.
You will as part of the conditional use permit, but the total, you know, review, this will be, you know, the highway department for ingress egress, the fire administrator for any kind of storage of hazardous materials, the sheriff's department for any concerns with security or location, you know, anything that would come up.
I was thinking of the developmental plan or whatever, that's something, then the commissioners are going to be looking back at us and making sure that we saw was in place when they do their licensing.
So this will be done through staff, it's going to be administratively, so the commission will review it as part of their approval of the licensing.
Understood. Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Mr. Jeffries?
Mr. Chair, thank you, Kit Jeffries, Rapid City. We're a representative Dakota Cannabis Consulting. I first had to come back and just back one step up. The definition of agriculture is the science or practice of farming, including cultivation of the soil for growing of crops and the rearing of animals for refined food, wool, and other products. That is agriculture. I would look that the commission, the Board of Commissioners look to amend that zoning ordinance in the future to allow agricultural zoning within 327. That was a really great question, proposed, just got to find one spot. So basically, in the entirety of 327, that's kind of what I said regarding 326, with additional layers of bureaucracy, security, security system, locks, video recording systems, waste disposal, these are all pulled from administrative rules, it's just redundant and extra, so every time maybe the Department of Health wants to come back in and update their rule to say, "We want more security, we want higher-grade locks, we want a three-inch steel door to your vault," that the ordinance would be updated instantaneous instead of having to wait to go through this process one more time. Has really the only comment I have on the entirety of 327, I'd just look to get those pieces that are doubled down in the rule and in this ordinance removed. removed so that it's easier, or at least noted that it's per ARSD or per statute so that it's really easy for everybody, really easy on the eyes, no extra bureaucracy. Thanks.
If you have those parallel, if you have those parallel items and could submit them to the planning staff, I think that these are things that could be addressed with future amendments.
Yes, sir. Thanks.
Future additional discussion? Nothing? Noting none. Staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment 21-15. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second for approval ordinance amendment 21-15. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 19.
Item 19 is ordinance amendment OA 21-16 for Pennington County to add Section 328 Marijuana Business License to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. This is to add this section to the zoning ordinance to establish the requirement for all dispensaries, cultivation facilities, manufacturers, and testing facilities to obtain a license in Pennington County. There were a few changes in this that are noted, one on page four, and then under Section 93, that was stricken.
Can I stop you on that one? I thought that we were just going to strike the first sentence, and the second part of that was going to be left.
That was something that the state's attorney's office was going to work at, and it was in her determination just to remove it completely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt. Keep going.
Oh, that's okay. There were some changes on page six to add calendar days to the numbers of days to the licensing, and then if you do look on page 10 on part R, there was some discussion about, you know, changes and amendments to the state law. This is where that will say that if the state law does have amendments, obviously, they would supersede.
Question for staff? Seeing none. Mr. Jeffries, do you want to discuss anything on this?
Mr. Chair, thank you, Kit Jeffries. Yeah, so I just wanted to turn your attention to page one, at the very bottom of the page. First and foremost, the number of licenses permitted. I had heard Commissioner Roskine address a previous speaker on a feasibility study. There's 150,000 some odd people within Pennington County. My question is, is how did the number three for dispensary licenses come about, the number three for cultivation, two for manufacturing, and one for testing? If anybody here is a rancher or farms or raises cattle, I'm sure you may understand the bottleneck that our ranchers had to endure when going through the four major beef packers. Governor Milam has looked at that issue and allowed them to go to small processors within the state of South Dakota because of the monopoly within the beef processing industry. And so I look at this, and I think to myself, first and foremost, one testing facility. The people who are coming back in to test the material for public safety, and we're going to allow one tester, one monopoly, to be the one in Pennington County. That doesn't mean to say that they can't go to Rapid City or Sturgis or wherever to get their product tested, and the market will decide prices and things like that, but for ease of convenience, only one makes it really difficult. As I can tell you that I'm the only consultant in Rapid City operating at this time, I've gotten a lot of feedback from everybody looking to get in this industry. There's a wide variety of stakeholders that are looking to get in this industry, whether it's dispensary cultivation, manufacturing. Do I think three dispensaries is enough to provide within the county for 155,000 people where front-range data estimates at 12% use marijuana in some capacity? We have a pretty good-sized list of debilitating conditions. I don't have a feasibility report to hand over to you today. However, I can work on one to get to, to give you an estimate on what the number of businesses should be allowed. And again, with the state's attorney's comment on being a little bit more liberal, I suppose, in the approach of allowing cultivation and manufacturing compared to some other counties, there are a lot of counties that are prohibiting it, and so I at least applaud the opportunity to have it in there. But like the city of Sioux Falls, for instance, prohibiting all cultivation manufacturing, those 200,000, that 200,000 population base is going to have to get that product from somewhere. And right now, Rapid City is going to be the home hub of where that cultivation material is going to come from. Lincoln County is going to be that home hub. Lincoln County does allow an unlimited number of license sites all the way across the board, depending on whatever establishment it is. And so I just, for the most part, would look to see a feasibility report on how the number of licenses came about. Going down to page two, oh, I'm sorry, page four, and kind of what we were talking about with the waiting period upon denial. If an applicant has been denied any county license or county renewal license pursuant to this section, the applicant must wait 12 months prior to reapplying for any license issued pursuant to this section unless the waiting period is waived by the board at the time, the time of denial by the board. And so my point to that is, it seems unreasonably strict, zoning restrictions that would be a cause for denial shouldn't penalize South Dakota stakeholders for a year before the reapplication. I would suggest this be changed, that if it were revoked or suspended, that the applicant should not be allowed to reapply within 12 months. We're penalizing people before they even get licensed. That, to me, sounds a little wild. So that's just one recommended change I'd have on page four. Moving down to page six, again, that six at the very top of the page, allegations have arisen that constitute good cause to deny renewal of an application. I believe that was just previously discussed. What is the definition of good cause? And so I've seen this time and time again. I've been in the cannabis industry for the last six years, in the professional cannabis industry for the last six years. Allegations is a really strong word to add into an ordinance. Let's just say everybody on the commission has a dispensary license. I am now alleging all of you are in the black market. Now what? So it's just one of those pieces that you have to be very cautious about. It's muddy, muddy water. We just need to define what good cause is, maybe such as convictions, repeated offenses, compliance violations, sign violations, who knows what it may be, suspensions. And so that would be the only ask that I'd have, and appreciate your time. We'll be around for questions. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I got a couple of questions.
Mr. Jeffries, if you could come up, I've got a few questions.
Now, we were talking about the number of facilities in Pennington County, so for discussion, dispensary, I think we're going with three.
Yep.
But that don't count the ones in Hill City, Constone, and Rapid City, correct?
Correct.
We're just talking in the county in general.
Correct.
Okay. And then what impact do you think the reservations in South Dakota are going to have because they're a lot more lenient, is my understanding, and I've heard a lot of people say, you know, if we get too stricter, they're just going to go to one of the reservations. So I'd just like your thoughts on that.
Yeah, absolutely. To touch on the reservations first, the reservations is so unique because they're governed by a different body. They're their own sovereign entity. They're operating right now. Right now, the Flanders Anti-Tribe has a monopoly in the state of South Dakota on medical marijuana. And so they may at some point choose to opt into the state license program, or they may choose to continue with their sovereign rules operating under tribal law. That'll be a direction for the tribe, and I can't speak for them, but it will be fascinating to see how that plays out. I would suspect that they're going to keep their bureaucracy low, allow stakeholders the opportunity to come in and set up the program. Just on the number of dispensaries, I'm a free-market capitalist by trade. I've always figured that the market will sort itself out. When you cap a license, it increases the valuation of a license. Ask anybody who wants to buy a liquor license here in Rapid City. They were sold at $5,000 or something like that at one point, and now they're hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we look in the industry, I relate that to North Dakota. North Dakota has eight dispensary licenses total for the entire state, and then two cultivation slash manufacturing licenses for the whole state. At the time of application, there was a pretty diverse group, except one Chicago attorney applied and got one cultivation and three dispensary licenses. He had been a part of this movement that went into super bureaucratic spots, such as what North Dakota's proposed law passed, what Michigan, or not Michigan, Pennsylvania, Massachusetts, Chicago, Illinois, and went around and targeted these individual bureaucratic municipalities, counties, and states, and turned around and sold this business on average for $27 million a license. He sold for $890 million to the largest cannabis conglomerate in the world. So artificial caps just increased the value of the license at that point. And we look at the free-market system, you know, I heard it today time and time again, but not verbatim, but the "not in my backyard." You hear that, and that's definitely reason for cause. I definitely understand where that's coming from. 72% of Pennington County, which is higher than the state average, voted in favor for medical marijuana. Granted, we have to transition at some point into recreational in the future. It will happen. It's coming. It's my opinion on it. But 72% voted in favor for medical marijuana. With the free-market system, looking at it, in Oklahoma, they have an unlimited free-market system. Yeah, there is a lot of dispensaries and municipalities, more than the market can hold. And the statistics on that come from the Oregon Medical Marijuana, Oklahoma Medical Marijuana Authority, in that in 2020, they issued 650 new licenses throughout the entire state of Oklahoma, 650. Yet they had a total of 8% market fund left. The market can only hold what the market can hold. So those businesses, the ones that are complaining are the ones that aren't making money because they don't have a good business model, good business plan, good location, things like that. And ultimately, they'll fail anyway, just as any business who doesn't have those structures in place would. So I've always been a proponent for free-market capitalism, and I always look back to that when I see caps and licensing and just say, unlimited, in my opinion, is better. Create the zoning districts and where they can be allowed and permitted, and that's where you put them. That's where you can come back in on the zoning portion of it and go, "Not in my backyard." Well, you're gosh darn right, not in the residentially zoned district. Absolutely. But that's the whole point of that. So that's where I come from. That's my position on it, and I hope that answered your question.
Oh, I got a question. If you ran the show, what, how many would you allow, thinking, you know, free market? Because right now, we're allowing about one for every 37,000 residents in Pennington County.
I would suspect that the people who are ready to come back in with license application would be big cannabis. They'd exploit that market. Those would be the ones who obtain the license. All you need is one principal officer, a board member that's a resident of the state of South Dakota, and I suppose, would you like to be on my principal, would you like to be one of my principal officers, you know what I mean? So it makes it super easy for that. To answer, I've always been free market. I think the unlimited amount would allow it to kind of sort itself out. And I know that sounds liberal in some instances, but when you hit that cap, that valuation goes up, that money doesn't come back and get circulated within the economy or the county, it goes down to state. So I look at it like this, too. If you had, you know, 15, 20 dispensary licenses, same as Rapid City, that's $5,000 per application fee that comes back and gets circulated within the departments, maybe it goes to general fund or whatever. So that's kind of been my position. I'd always recommend to allow unlimited cultivation, manufacturing, that piece. The black market exists in South Dakota, guys, whether we want it to or not. The black market's here, and right now, we're trying to move that into a regulated system. The black market does not care if you market gummies or whatever to kids. They don't care, but to put Scooby Doo, your kid's favorite cartoon character, on those gummies. South Dakota's putting rules and regulations in place to eliminate that opportunity. So the back end of that is, is that the black market is mainly cultivated outdoors in states where it is legal and shipped over, right? And that's what the concern was from law enforcement, was that the theft and the black market activity and things like that. The question is, has anybody purchased black market alcohol in the last 10 years? How about black market tobacco? It just doesn't exist, only in states where there's heavy prohibition against it. One in five cigarettes in California is illegally imported in because they have one of the highest excise taxes on tobacco in the country. So that's what happens when bureaucracy gets set in place. Black market looks to other avenues, other options, other pieces like that. So to say, to just, long story short, I would say unlimited cultivation, unlimited manufacturing, unlimited testing, and if you had to pick a cap on dispensaries, cap it at a point where I don't think you would necessarily ever hit that threshold, but allow the opportunity for that money to come back and circulate within the economy.
With that being said, if we go with free as we planned, but two years from now, we figure we're going to kind of go to the free market. So I'm assuming that we got the latitude to say, "Well, we're going to change it. We're going to go 10."
Yep.
And so the three that were sold, by adding another seven, that's going to devalue them, I would assume, because supply and demand.
Yeah, absolutely. And the Flanders Anti-Tribe right now is the only one, and those three, for those years, would greatly appreciate it if you held that for two years. That's for sure. You know, and that's another thing, too. If I come back in and I get a cultivation license or a dispensary license, I would come back in on the other side and advocate that you don't, you keep those caps. You'd keep those caps in place, because then that evaluation increases for me as a business owner. And so that's just been my position.
And my last question would be, there's 66 counties in the state of South Dakota, and I've heard rumors what a testing facility costs, and so how many counties do you think will actually have a testing facility?
So unfortunately, I'm not connected to the Wi-Fi, but I have a working dock on every single county and municipality within the state of South Dakota and what they're doing, where they're moving. I can get you that information. I just can't because I'm not connected to Wi-Fi. I apologize.
No, I'm just guessing. If we had one testing facility in Rapid City, that would probably be, you know, that would probably suffice all Pennington County.
Yeah, that'd be great, as long as they didn't charge $500 a pound to test it, right?
Yeah.
So they would get to choose on where the market was if there was only one of them. So...
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Pretty slippery slope there.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I had one thought on the same thing. Are limited, I'm waiting and sitting back to see what the state's reaction is when this is all shakes out, because they're the ones that actually give the license. That's all I'm saying. I don't think we're done.
I have a question for Megan.
Go ahead.
The item allegations have arisen that constitute good cause, what kind of allegations would they be, and is that, does that word need to be strengthened?
So typically, that would be obvious ordinance violations, obvious violations of the law. It's sort of a catch-all phrase for a situation that nobody anticipated at the beginning. Obviously, something minimal is not going to be a reason to decline licensing. It has to usually typically be something pretty significant.
Should we say that allegations have arisen and been proven that constitute good cause? I don't know.
Well, I suppose the question is, what standard of proof do you want? I mean, because, I mean, depending on whether it's criminal or whether it's a civil issue, there are different standards at law, which you can go by a preponderance of the evidence that the allegations are true, or that evidence has been presented to the board, which leads them to believe that these allegations are in fact true. There is language that we could include that would tighten that up a little bit. I usually add the good cause language in there because there are always going to be scenarios that we did not anticipate.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Relative to my South Dakota license to praise real estate, I have to submit a application each year, and the allegation, if you put felony allegation, felony in front of that, you'd probably have it covered.
Well, and in fact, actually, the statutory framework doesn't allow somebody who has been convicted of a violent felony to even get through the state licensing application, and so that's already addressed to a certain extent by our ordinance as far as if you're breaking the law, it's already addressed. That language is really to catch a scenario that is so outside of the norm of what we could anticipate would be a problem, and I can't say what that's going to be because I just don't know, because it is a catch-all phrase. And we can tighten up the language... And we can tighten up the language, um, if the planning commission is concerned with that language. Um, and I can look at it to tighten it up. Um, but as far as getting rid of it entirely, I worry if we get rid of it entirely, there's going to be a situation that comes up that causes significant concern for the board and the board can't do anything about it because they didn't specify, um, one of, a reason that would fall under our ordinance.
My concern would be you get six planning commissioners here and if we sat there and wrote our interpretation of what allegation was, they'd probably all be different. So that's, I mean, that's just the reality of it.
And we could change the language to an allegation that's been proven by a preponderance of the evidence.
But we're not a, we're not a court. I, I would submit to the board that e- every time we get up here, there's allegations from one side or the other talking about who took the trash out on Monday and Tuesday as a outlandish example, but, but we, we have people that come up here and, and the, the music was on till ten-thirty. Well, the music was on till eleven-fifteen. You, you know what I'm saying? And, and we have to kind of digest all of that information and then decide on, on, on how to move forward. I, I guess I'm, I'm okay with it in there, uh, be- because I have confidence that, in, in the people that will be on the board, um, that will, that this is gonna be substantial for it to be here. For someone to get called up here with a license, they're not responding to staff's investigation, staff's comments, questions, those types of things. So I'm, my, my opinion is, is that it, that, that it's fine.
And this is to, to schedule a hearing. So yeah, I'm okay with that too.
Mr. Chair, I am too. I, I think you've got to have some flexibility to, to vote, we're passing a judgment on the validity of the process, the people and the things.
And Mr. Chair, I would just like to capitalize, or you know, kind of compound on some of that. You know, and we scheduled a hearing in front of the, the planning commission based on some kind of, you know, something that has gone on. You know, we're bringing that information. I don't see staff bringing that information lightly unless it was something that, you know, with the direction of the state's attorney's office that was appropriate to bring in front of the planning commission. Because when you revoke something, even a conditional use permit, it's, it's, could be significant and serious. So I don't see that. It would just be a, a, an unimportant or a, a non-substantial type of issue.
And obviously th- this, um, commission is always going to be, uh, you know, burdened by, you know, constitutional due process requirements. So it's not gonna just be a minimal sort of thing that comes before, um, the commission or the board. Um, it's typically gonna be a fundamental issue is, is what the anticipation is.
One question that, um, Mr. Jeffries brought up that I, um, I keep going back to is the, the writing on page four of ten, so, uh, H three is the waiting period upon denial if the applicant has been denied any county license or county renewal license pursuant to this section. So this is specific to this section and not any county license, right? It would be any county license according to section three-twenty-eight.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I think.
It would only be marijuana licenses.
Okay. So then, a- and we're saying he would be denied the license. What is, what are your thoughts on changing that to revoke or suspended?
Well, one, I just had one question or one comment on that. If you look at the two previous sections, I mean, there's some pretty significant reasons for denial. So it isn't something that's just going to be, I mean, these are pretty substantial. So if the reason for that denial, um, is going to be somewhat material.
Yeah. So if someone comes forth and they're in one of the, the acceptable zoning, um, locations, they meet all of the boxes, all the boxes are checked. Um, they, it's, it's almost, um, by right that they have all of these things by ordinance and they get sent off to the state.
That's correct.
Understood. Thank you. Further questions for staff?
Now, I, I just had one comment. The only one that I just, I'd like to see now was still something about that the review, uh, of, I believe you call it background checks, was done by a contracted, outside house contracted. Other than that, I don't have any problem with any of them. I still believe that. They make errors, even the outside contractors make errors, but to, to leave it where they can select how they're gonna go about that background check, that I, I'm concerned about that.
And I, I can speak briefly to that. So the state has designated how those background checks need to be done. Um, I don't believe that they have, it has to be a outside, non, you know, it, it, they could possibly have a conflict by the way that it's written right now. Um, and our plan is to follow whatever the requirements are at state level.
My concern was that the person that directs, who get, does the background checks already has a conflict. It's, you know, to protect P Y A. And, and we were leaving that door. And I guess if the state does, then we've got to leave the same door open. But at least Charlie said we shouldn't do that. Okay?
Yeah, and I, I, I completely understand, um, your concern. We are just kind of following.
I know. Following the rubber stamp.
Yes. Yeah. And as far as, I know you had spoke at the last hearing about potentially the sheriff doing those background checks.
Or something.
And there are some pretty significant constraints on the background checks that the sheriff can do through their FBI, um, access. Having been a former prosecutor, um, I'm pretty familiar with, uh, there are a lot of specific statutory reasons, um, that the sheriff would do a background check and this would typically not be one of them as far as I'm aware.
Thank you. I, I, I'm just saying, I just, that was the only thing I thought was missing. I'm sorry to continue.
Further questions, comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair, you know, I, I kind of like that idea of fifteen descent dispensaries because that would be fifteen times five thousand dollars that we would get. And my guess is that after two years, only three of them would be open anyhow. That's just my, uh, thank you for sharing that.
Mr. Jeffries, did you have one last thing here?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, and Commissioner Johnson, actually to touch on that background check. On Monday, the thirteenth, I wasn't available to be here. Uh, I was at the Legislative Rules and Review Committee where that question came up. It was a very, very, very good question because at the Rules and Review Committee, Representative Kevin Jensen brought forward that same piece and said, well, within statutes, not defined what type of background check. It doesn't say criminal. It doesn't say financial. It doesn't say anything. And so the Rules and Review Committee, there is, um, audio that's on the legislative website that you can go in and listen to based on that. But you're absolutely right. Um, there are companies that do it specifically for cannabis companies. Um, one of them is, uh, C-Badge. Shameless plug for, uh, company out of Colorado. Um, but that's what they do. They do all the wide variety of background checks to meet certain state requirements because within these licensed establishments, your employees will have to have badges, but not on top, on, they have to have a background check as well. And so if that's not defined, that's the piece. So maybe that would be something you look to in ordinance. I don't know. It'd be a question for the state's attorney's office on how to go about it. But that's a really, really good question. I'm just wanting to bring that up and let you know the Senate Rules and Review Committee.
Ken, in our state, we don't trump the state. So the state's gonna win this one like she says.
Yeah, so the right, right now.
No matter what, I think.
Yeah, right now, background checks were up in the air as for Rules and Review Committee. So thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Further questions or comments on ordinance amendment twenty-one dash sixteen? Sir, do you have?
Any helpful solutions?
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, my question is to this lady over here, um, what happens if you pass all the qualifications on your application at a one-hundred percent, follow all the rules and regulations? And there's only so many licenses available and they give them to somebody else? Do you get your money back then or what?
So for the review process, you do not get your money back. Um, you don't pay the final licensing fee until the very end after you have been accepted by the state. Um, so it's approximately forty-five hundred, um, for the fees for review. Um, and then it's five thousand, um, once you actually get the approval from the state.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. So if you actually get the license, it's five thousand a year. Um, and that's just based on our ordinance. And so the planning department can basically support the additional review that they're gonna be having to do with these businesses.
Sure. Thank you for answering the question. No further discussion noted. Staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment twenty-one sixteen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item twenty.
So the county board report, the board of commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from their September thirteenth meeting.
Items from the public, twenty-one. Noting none. Items from staff?
I just had a couple of items. Um, one of them that had kind of come up from Commissioner Runde. Um, our office has, uh, started doing pre-meetings with anyone that is, um, submitting a conditional use permit or variance application. So prior to actually accepting the application, we are setting up meetings with them to go over all of the process, uh, before the applications are submitted. So it should help with some of the misunderstandings or miscommunications about what's going on. So.
That's great. Thank you very much.
And, and just so the commission is aware, we are adding that to our ordinance. Um, so that way there isn't any complaints or confusion from the public that is gonna be added to our ordinance. So that way they understand that this is a new requirement. Um, it just became an issue where we were getting information that was not altogether accurate until you have a full conversation with individuals. Um, and so that was leading to a lot of things having to be changed or different advice being given because we weren't getting the full picture.
Well, and we've had some things come before the board where, um, you, you know, the, the property owners have, have said that they were told one thing or the other. And, um, all right. So I appreciate what you guys are doing. Appreciate that. Items from the membership.
Don't we have a lunch break?
We're just about going to go there. But I do have one question for staff. I know Sandra's giving me the eyes in the back of my head here. I, I'm struck by, um, how many times we, we have, um, you know, things that come in after the fact where, where, um, we, we as a group Pennington County Planning, um, try to accommodate people that have started, um, things before getting permission. And so it's the acceptance after the fact. Um, how do other counties and cities deal with that? I mean, do they show up and, and shut things down? Do they allow them to continue to operate? How, how, how is that handled in, in the general region?
You know, I don't know specifically. I haven't reached out to any cities or other counties to see if there is, um, you know, that, that is that, you know, ask for forgiveness later, um, kind of mentality a lot. And we see that a lot. Um, just comments in our office, um, you know, well, we didn't know if we'd get it, but if we started it, then nobody's gonna make us, you know, take it away from us.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that has been the mentality, um, you know, with the, with our ordinances, you know, we have to file, you know, stuff in court and then it has to go over to court and each day. Um, you know, so it can be somewhat cumbersome as far as that. Uh, we have been, you know, working with the state's attorney's office and with our ordinance enforcement to see if there's actually some way for ordinance enforcement to go out. Cause I know Mead County, they, they go out and find, they write tickets. I mean, they can actually do that all the time.
And I want to make sure that we don't talk about any items on, on the agenda at all with, with respect to this conversation or previous agenda items on previous meetings. But my question is, is when the, when the county goes out and the ordinance violation is, is known, how, how far up the scale of that this gotta stop, um, before we work with them and they just basically get shut down until they come through the process appropriately?
Right. The only real avenue that we have legally is an injunction. I mean, that is something we'd have to go through courts that basically is a legal injunction that says you have to stop. Um, we have done that, um, in the past. Um, most, most people that we have worked with, I think, are genuine or they don't know, or they don't understand the planning process. They didn't realize that it was something that they had to do. Um, and when we do send first notices, they are, um, pretty compliant. You know, they, they work with our office to come into compliance. We do have some that just don't and that we work with on a regular basis, that Megan has worked with on a regular basis where we have been in court, um, on a couple of occasions to try to get them into compliance.
Okay.
But I would say in general, most people, um, are very willing to come into compliance and work well with our office.
I would, and I would agree with that. I would say that I could probably count the number on, on, on less than one, one hand of the times where, um, I've been sitting up here, um, and the person, uh, standing at the lectern is obviously very sophisticated and, uh, and, but they were, they're saying that they didn't, they didn't know they had to do that. And so I'm trying to, I'm trying to gauge that from staff's perspective on how egregious the, 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 the issue is be- uh, before it gets elevated.
Sure. I, I think the biggest one that we see is the living in RVs. Cause I think people, um, it's their land. They want to use it. They don't see that as a conditional use. So I would say that's probably the biggest one that we have right now. Um, the other ones, I'm trying to think, you know, junk on property, storing things on property, they might not, shouldn't. Um, I'm trying to think of some of the.
Brittany, can I ask you a question? Do we still deputize the ordinance control officer?
No, we have not yet. That was something.
Be used to. And it, it gave them a certain amount of latitude to be able to enter the property as I understood it on a, on a complaint.
So, so we have a couple of options. Um, as far as enforcement from a legal standpoint, not all of them are great, to be completely honest. Um, South Dakota law doesn't really empower counties and local municipalities. Well, they, they empower local municipalities a little bit more, but everybody in this room knows that they have more authority, um, than counties do. So there are always a couple of options. Um, we can always cite them with class two misdemeanor. That is very minimal. It's thirty days in jail, a five hundred dollar fine or both. Technically, we could charge them for a separate violation for each day that they remain not in compliance with our ordinance. Um, and we have specific situations, usually those are public nuisance types of violations, um, under our ordinance. I can't remember. It's the.
One oh six.
One oh six. Um, so that's one option that we can always pursue. That pulls them into criminal court. Um, and then they have to sit in front of a judge and kind of justify their actions, which we have done. We have a couple of people that are in that situation right now. Our, their option is an injunction, which obviously has to come before court also. Um, that's a filing that I would do for the planning, uh, department. Um, obviously we've done stop work orders before. Those are very specific situations. We have specific ordinance, um, that we have to follow for our stop work, which is typ- typically work that is not allowed. Um, as far as the ability to go in and find a significant amount or do those types of measures stop, you know, stop operations? Um, those are difficult, um, because we don't have a lot of authority under the law to do those.
Sure. Okay.
Can I throw in the one? I, and I told the chair this, we still have an infamous, uh, case where we prevailed. And that was about a septic issue. We still do have not.
Any items? I, I don't want any, any.
No, I'm not going to.
We're talking generalities here.
But what I'm pointing out is that we prevailed and we still haven't done anything about prevailing, have we?
Gonna let them answer that after the meeting.
But, and the one other tool that we have used, um, because our nuisance ordinance is written in the way that it, because it was updated, um, we can abate. So if they don't do what they're supposed to, um, if we go in and remove whatever it is, the nuisance or the violation, um, that seems to motivate individuals also. So.
There are also cons- constraints with that as far as how much it costs. So if we have a la- a piece of property that has significant junk on it, um, and that's gonna cost a decent amount of money for the county to come in, um, it's, that comes directly out of the planning budget. Um, so it's incredibly difficult for the planning department to do abatement in some of these situations.
Mr. Chair, I apologize if I didn't. Mr. Chair, I apologize if I didn't know where to bring them up, but even last week I brought up, we were accused.
We don't want to talk about any specific agenda items.
No.
Or anything else.
Okay.
Only in generalities, go ahead.
So it seems, uh, you know, when we look back at what we did today, there's two components. One would be property rights, and then there's always that monetary component. You know, it's just a, it's just based on, I'm gonna make more money if I do this, I'm gonna make more money if I don't do this. But then on the other side of that, there's some property rights involved and you just have to find that happy medium where you think you're doing the, the right thing.
Right, and from our office's perspective, we have to look at reasonable use of land so that whatever that they're proposing and whatever situation that they have, um, that they're able to do that if it's reasonable and we're not keeping them from being able to do something, um, on their property or making it not usable in a, in a, in a manner.
Anything else from the membership? Sandy, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Please.
Second.
Motion and second for adjournment. Additional discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. We are adjourned.